I will call to order the work session in the Wilsonville City Council September 4th, 2025 at 5:00 PM. I will start by asking council members for review of the amended, excuse me, the agenda and items on consent. Are there any comments? Okay. Are there any council concerns before we begin our pre-council work session? Seeing none. Turning to our work session, first up is the 2025 Legislative Session Recap.
Thank you for allowing us to do this presentation today. I am Everett Wild, the city's Government Relations Manager, and I am joined by Greg Leo, who is our contract lobbyist. And as I pull up the presentation here, Greg will kick us off with a recap of the 2025 Legislative Session. And then at the end, we'll take a few minutes to talk about the special session that is currently going on down in Salem.
Thank you, Everett. Mayor O'Neill, members of the Wilsonville City Council, for the record, my name is Greg Leo. I'm Government Affairs Council on a contract with the city. Boy, what an interesting six months it's been. We last saw you on the 23rd of January when you looked and approved the priorities, legislative priorities. And since then, we had the 160-day legislative session that went 158 days, two days short, and was, you know, pretty active. So in the materials that I have provided for you today, let's go to the next slide there, is based on, you know, your agenda and priorities. And so what we have tried to do is take a large amount of information and put it in a usable form for you. So, and then link it with other resources. So, but it all flows from the state legislative agenda and the priorities. Next slide. So this report, this summary, is really kind of like a Russian doll, you know, where you pull off one piece of the doll and there's another doll underneath. You will find lots of links to different places. So I wanted to just kind of take a minute to talk about how to use the report. You know, first, there's a written summary, which where I talk about the highlights and just kind of, you know, a very brief form overview. Next, we have the context. And I think I was really pleased with a lot of the material that came out of the Legislative Policy Office. So I borrowed their infographic to show the number of bills, where the bills originated from, how many came from the executive branch, interestingly, the amount of public engagement. This kind of infographic and information is new in new form. So the Legislative Policy Office is putting a lot of this stuff up on OLIS. So I recommend that all of us get really good at using OLIS because it's become a much more robust resource. So I would just say that this has been a very unusual session in very, in many ways. First of all, we, you know, had a lot, number of transitions. So we had our state representative become our state senator. Our state senator passed away in April. You know, we had the retirement of, you know, the person, I worked, Mark Ottenhead, welcome, Everett, good to have you here. And in the course of things, we saw these 3,400 bills and winnowed it down to 104 bills that you have in the summary sheet. And so in that summary sheet, you'll see their hot link to OLIS. So every time you see in your report a blue number where it's blue, that'll hot link it to the bill file in OLIS. And that is extremely rich resource that will show you what the testimony was, what the, you know, history of the bill is, the actual amendments. And then it really goes down to video. Every single hearing in Salem nowadays is videoed. So if you say, well, what was said on the, you know, 23rd of February in the Revenue Committee, you can actually go to that committee hearing and then watch it on TV. Not that you all have that much time to do that, but people like me actually do go back and listen because then we hear the tenor of the arguments and see what the legislative history is. So really, interesting time of change and away chaos. I mean, during this entire time, the Capitol's been under construction. We would be in hearing rooms and hear jackhammers. You know, the chambers were open and the offices, but really, most of the work was done literally in the lobby outside the hearing rooms. And so you had a lot of people in the building in their kind of chaotic circumstances. We had a long period of time where we had lost stability in the legislative process because we had Senator Courtney, the longest-serving legislator in Oregon history, as the president of the Senate, which was an extremely stable period of time. Tina Kotek, our current governor, was, you know, Speaker for a long time, and things were kind of normal and ran in a very orderly fashion. It wasn't that way this session. We had new leadership, both as the Speaker and the, you know, President of the Senate. We had many new committee chairs. We had many legislators who had never been in the legislative process when the Capitol was not under construction. So I'm kind of giving you the picture of why things are just kind of chaotic and unusual this time around. The Democrats came into session with a three-fifths majority, which theoretically means they have a tax majority. But as we've seen recently in the news with the transportation bill, it hasn't really been realized because one vote away and you can't pass the bill. And so when the House just, you know, looked at the transportation bill, for example, you have a pairing of one Republican voting for it, and the rest of the caucus, you know, didn't, and one Democrat. And so voting, you know, the other way. And so you saw that one vote can make a difference, even with this three-fifths majority going in. I think the governor has incredible amount of authority in the process, not only because she was previously Speaker, but a lot of the bills that moved actually came out of the governor's office, especially in the housing area, which we'll get to in a bit. So we are well, you know, going into session, we're extremely well-represented by Senator Woods, who's, you know, came out of our city, extremely effective, especially in the ways and means process, very, very helpful on the Aurora Airport issue, SCR2, which was a bill that we objected to. We were able to offer alternative language, which killed the bill. And the mayor was ready to come down and ice storm to give testimony, and we found we didn't need to do that. So that worked out. But then that bill, that same language came back in SR2 after, and was heard by the Senate Rules Committee after Senator Woods' death and passed. And so you'll see, that's the only yellow mark we have on the, on the scorecard in the report. I want to do a shout out to, you know, Senator Neron Mislin, former Representative Neron, for her help. We did not have unemployment benefits for striking workers in Bill 916 on our legislative agenda, but it was a very high priority for the League. The League of Oregon Cities asked us and Sherwood and Tuollet and all the other cities in our district to vote, you know, against the bill, and she broke with her caucus and voted that way. So a shout out to her for a courageous vote, although that was not, again, part of our legislative agenda. Likewise, on two of the housing bills, Senator Neron Mislin was, in one case, the only one to vote against the shot clock bill, which is a bill that we cared deeply about, which, you know, basically was changing design review standards and preempting our local authority for our design review committees to make choices about, they'd say aesthetic, but really it kind of went broader than that, you know, conditions on housing plans. And so, and thank you for that, Senator Neron, and, or Senator Neron Mislin, and also the second vote, where she was only one of two, you know, votes against it. So she did that for us, and we are most grateful for that. So let's move on to the next one. Just, you know, one last thing on the last slide. This is kind of like a corporate report. You read it from the back forward. So if you go to the 104 bills that are on the chart, that's a great way to say which ones are interesting that I'd like to know more about. So it's kind of like you read the financials in the back of the annual report first, and then you go see the kind of narrative in the front. So I would just give you that recommendation. So you're going to be involved in policy reviews, and so I wanted to put as many resources at your fingertips to be able to sort through all of these different public policies. And so in the very last part of the report, you'll see there's a hot link to the Legislative Policy Office page where you have a number of, this is where, you know, you go into one area, you can go into various bills, and then you can actually pull up those bills from that. So when you have a question about a various aspect of it, we can certainly take a look at it. For the highlights, we did kind of a heat map here to show, you don't get everything you want at the legislature. You get as much as you can, and we won some and we lost some. And primarily, we lost once in transportation because, you know, of the, you know, inability to pass the major transportation bill. We also did not do well on our two transit bills. The one, of course, is the, you know, subregional allocation of the STIF funds. We, as a city, believe it should be reformed. And the second one has to do with the co-terminous nature of SMART and the city boundaries. Both of those issues will be coming back as the transportation debate goes forward. So it's like, no, we didn't get them for now, but we have, I think, opportunity in the future. In the governance area, we restored recreational immunity, which is a priority bill for us, and that was great. We did that in concert with all the other cities. The Aurora Airport is the only place with the yellow, and because we at first won it and it came back in what I would call a zombie bill, a bill that is gilded and then comes back in a second form. But I think we made our point about the nature of the debate around the Aurora Airport by the, you know, language that we got in there. Housing infrastructure, there was, is money that's been put into the budget for Business Oregon, and I know that our staff is looking for ways to pay for housing infrastructure. So there was a fundamental decision legislature made, not the earmark, specific projects, and we had put in requests on House Bill 3737 to have a specific earmark for, you know, Frog Pond, which did not get, did not pass, but rather, the money was collectively put into Business Oregon. So we need to look there for additional funding for infrastructure. So in industrial lands, we did really well. The, you know, the regionally significant industrial land bill passed. We remember we had authority in the last session. This time, we got $10 million. We were asking for 40 million, and we got 10 million, which was good. On vertical housing, it was extended, the authority to give the tax incentive for vertical housing, and those were both on our list. Childcare, probably the biggest win. We played a role in the childcare facility siting, supporting that legislation. And also, there's quite a significant amount of money that went into the early childhood programs that we were generally supportive of. So good work on childcare. On homelessness, I dare not say much about homelessness without looking at Amanda because she really is the expert on this one, but we did pretty well. I think the grants passed Supreme Court case kind of set the tone that localities need to have the ability to make time, place, and manner decisions. And then the follow-up was a large homelessness authority bill and funding, which will give money to deal with that. So this heat map here kind of gives a, takes all of our 14 priorities and tells you kind of the scorecard of how we did on it. Next slide.
Before we go on to the next slide, I want to pause and see if there are any council questions because we want to be mindful of your time, councilors. Okay.
Great. I'll be, I'll be quick. And I just want to say, we have challenges coming in four areas. The transportation debate will go on for multiple sessions. So what I think we learned just in this special session situation is that there are fundamental aspects of how the STIF is collected and spent. That is going to, that means, that means a lot to us because of SMART. That will go on, not just during the 2026 session, but later on, 2027, and even further out, because there's a fundamental disconnect in the nexus between the employment tax and spending on transit. And that came out really clearly in the recent floor debate. Housing, I want to throw a cautionary yellow flag on housing. I think our authority is being preempted in many ways in determining the communities that, that we want to have, especially as it affects things like, you know, state-approved housing designs, something that we would want to give to our design review committee. The traffic congestion part of House Bill 2025 failed, and that was one that we were hopeful would help us sort out, the capacity problem on I-5. And finally, the West to Salem journey continues. You know, for three sessions in a row, now we've had unanimous support of West to Salem, only for it to go the ways and means and die. This time, it was about the authorities to create a Willamette Valley Rail Authority, which were generally well-received in the Transportation, Joint Transportation Committee, but were, again, not funded. Okay, so those are things I would flag as challenges that the council should really pay attention to. Next slide. My wife, Rachel Leo, is here. She is my business partner. She's the smart one, and she has the computer open and her fingers ready to bring forward information. The Leo Company is really proud of our work with the city of Wilsonville, and we're happy to answer questions. But before, let's just go to the very next slide. I just want to say that this picture I found, maybe I'm sentimental, but this was from a year ago with Mark Ottenhead and myself and Senator Woods. So, and I offer this because it shows just how much change there has been, even in the last year. So with that, that's my oral aspect of my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Dunwell.
You beat me to my light. Thank you. First of all, I read the report from cover to cover. It was comprehensive, and it led me to a lot of questions and some very, very clear concerns. And I want to appreciate you publicly and thank you publicly for the amount of work that was placed into this because it, we're not down there. And so to see this ourselves and be able to get, look at that narrative, and that drove me then to, thank you. You accepted a call from me, I believe it was on Labor Day or Sunday, yeah, during everything that was going on down in Salem. And I believe you were in Salem when you took the call.
I was.
And, because I asked some more questions. And for all of us as councilors, what I really keyed on, and this goes back to as when I was Chair of Housing, the Housing Our Future Committee Task Force, what I really keyed on was the housing element more than anything else. There were a lot of concerning issues in there. And I want, and also, I want to bring to the attention of council and the public that particularly Senate Bill 974, which is the Engineering Shot Clock and Design Review Limits, and House Bill 2138, which was the middle housing requirement. Let me read them, reread those, just the summaries for both of those to you really quick. On Senate Bill 974 on the shot clock, it's requiring cities to update land use regulations related to middle housing definitions, single-room occupancies, middle housing land divisions, and clear and objective tree removal standards. House Bill 2138, middle housing is requiring cities to update land use regulations related to middle housing definitions, single-room occupancies, middle housing land divisions, and clear and objective tree removal standards. I'm not sure if there's some confusion there. Anyway, what I'm getting to, what this means, and in a very specific yet quite small but digestible for all of us, element of the overall impact, is if you're a tree city, there's a lot bigger stuff. This was a tiny one. But if you're a tree city, it removes our city's ability to decide when and where trees can be removed. And I'm just getting started on the impact of these two bills. Moreover, home builders and the outsized influence of Triment, Portland, and Eugene, from my beliefs, now control our destiny. In summary, I believe that the state is really finally tightening the noose on us. We're losing control of our own ability to drive our destiny as a city, and we're seeing it piece by piece and bit by bit. The passage of those two bills, in addition to other concerning recent executive orders and legislation, are removing the rights and the self-determination of our cities, and they're, they're eroding the ability to, us to have local control of our future. And I want to make sure that we, sometimes as a council and as a city, we have to make decisions. We may not necessarily be comfortable with those, but we are driven by state requirements, legislation, executive orders, whatever it may be, that force our hand on some of these. So, yeah, I have to show our city staff some grace on some of these decisions because we are driven by the vagaries and the requirements of state law. So, thank you.
Counselor Dunwell, Mayor O'Neill, yes, absolutely on target. And we need to be back in Salem, getting back our local control, and it's just the major area. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dunwell. Well said. Counselor Chevlin?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo Counselor Dunwell's thank you for the work done by the Leo Company. This was a very comprehensive summary, and I too read it cover to cover. And I felt like, I didn't, while I didn't feel I was in Salem, it was very, very detailed, and it really helped. I have a question about the $1 million that Senator Courtney Neron Mislin was able to obtain for us for the Boone Bridge replacement project. So we know that's just a piece of it. Can you help me, because I don't remember? What's the balance that's needed to just move forward on this study part, the very first steps for the bridge?
Counselor Chevlin, Mayor O'Neill, we initially asked for 6 million for just the next phase, and this is just to keep the project moving forward. The, you know, we don't really know the total cost, but it could be upward of a billion to replace the bridge completely. So that is a very important $1 million that we got, you know, in the ways and means process because it was the only transportation money anybody got, because all the other money was in House Bill 2025, which, you know, they're still kind of in the process of considering. And so we were, I mean, this, you know, hats off to, you know, Senator Neron Mislin for getting us in the Christmas tree bill for that $1 million. And so what has been heartening to me is that when we've met with ODOT, which, you know, Everett organized the meeting with ODOT, you know, Director Strickler's at the meeting, along with, you know, Congresswoman Salinas's staff person, and there's, you know, there is hope. You know, even though it's not anywhere near the money we need, it keeps the process moving forward and gives the money we need to start, to really get the planning process going. So, and Everett knows way more about this than I do, so I defer him on it. But the, the idea is that $1 million, it may not seem like much in the grand scheme of things, but it is important money at the right time to keep the project moving forward.
All right. Thank you. And then we'll watch that closely because we do want to see some action then, whatever the $1 million buys us. Not a lot, but.
Buys a whole bridge. I can guarantee that.
Not much, but I don't want it to get lost. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
City Council President Barry.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for your report presentation. I found, I also read it cover to cover. That's our job. But I really appreciate how you took all that different information, especially when it was such a chaotic session, and you were able to put it in a format that was easy to read and understand. One of the points that I think needs to be highlighted is, we were talking about transportation, is the tolling's no longer going to be considered, right?
Yes.
So that's, that was something that was really under a lot of discussion for the last couple of years here in Wilsonville and with our neighboring cities.
Yeah, it certainly is. And Counselor Barry and Mayor O'Neill, yes, the, we will, because of our location, we will always be looking at multi-modes of transportation. It's just, it is, it's been our history and it will be our future. And so that's why we have to really pay very close attention to everything. And, and, you know, if I can just take a little aside, well, first of all, I wanted to just clarify, I did not write all the testimony here. Mark Ottenhead did. I think I wrote one, you know, just the transportation bill. So hats off the mark, and it was extensive. And I didn't put all of the background material on every bill because I didn't want to give you a 600-page packet, right? But only a 200-page packet. But, you know, it's all there and it's all online and all extremely well-documented. And we have been, you know, as a city, on the forefront of transportation issues. And that's why, you know, we've always punched over our weight on, you know, SMART and on being on I-5 and having connectivity with, you know, both North and South. And that's why it's so important that we took out what we did, you know, took the leadership role, you know, on the West to Salem and trying to keep West to Salem moving forward. And, you know, it's disappointing that three sessions, unanimous votes out of the Joint Transportation, still not funded, but I think the conversation continues, and this is going to be a very long-term thing. But we just want to make sure that if rail does come to Oregon, which I think it will at some point for capacity reasons, that it stops here and doesn't bypass our city. That's the, I think, the whole point of why we pursue that. So I hope that addresses the question. Thank you.
You have questions?
I have one more comment. And I just want to let council know, and I will put it in the record, just to make sure that we all have it. As a result of my call with Greg Leo on Monday, he, and I was asking a lot of questions about our economic future and what happens next. He forwarded me a document from the state, and it's the 925 Economic and Revenue Forecast, which had just been released on the 27th of August. And what it pretty much states is, we have clouds on the horizon. So I would recommend we all take a look at that and we think about that, and, and look about, as a city, how we can look forward and how we can be really strategic in making sure our city moves forward, both in, you know, times of plenty, but also in times where we may be dealing with some issues. So thank you.
Counselor Dunwell, Mayor O'Neill, the, right now, we're looking at a negative balance after the September revenue report of $888 million. So in February, when the short session, three, five-day short session starts February 1st, goes through about March 6th, they're going to need to rebalance the state budget. So there will be, you know, reauthorization and kind of reallocation of funds. So not all of the programs that got funded are going to get that amount of money. The legislature has to do a rebalancing of this. So the state, the New State Economist has created an incredibly robust report, and Everett and I can get that to you, that was released with the revenue forecast. And it basically shows an economic contraction, not just nationally, but specifically here in Oregon. And so because our, you know, taxes are so heavily based, you know, on, you know, income tax, that, that creates a lot of volatility in how much revenue government is able to collect. And so this is not a time to be coming to Salem with, you know, bright, shiny, new things to be funded. Rather, this is a time when there's going to need to be some belt tightening. And because I think there are some storm clouds on the horizon, especially in terms of employment. So, and we've seen that with, you know, companies leaving Oregon. We've seen that with tariffs affecting international trade. We've seen it with, you know, Intel. We've seen it with Nike, the kind of pillars of our local economy. So the, you know, whole discussion is going to shift to the economics, how do we keep the business environment creating growth and jobs and being able to create the revenues that we need for basic government services. I hope that answers.
Thank you. Counselor Cunningham?
Thank you. You know, to the point you just made, I think, I think we have to start to think a little bit more of kind of getting a back-to-basics kind of approach to things. Definitely with that report that I look forward to reading and, you know, our own city budget outlook, you know, kind of the idea of looking for bright, shiny, new things might be something that we need to set aside and make sure that we have our foundations under control. But I wanted to thank both of you for your work this session. Everett, you were a little late to the game, but not, not by your fault at all, just because of when you were hired recently. But I did appreciate the recent updates on the special session on the transportation bill. Those were very helpful. Those were very helpful. And Greg, thank you very much for your support through this. I definitely had a few phone calls and emails with you regarding a few things.
Thank you.
And, you know, one of those, one of those being HB 2258 that I think Councilor Dunwell had mentioned, and just some of these things that are just taking our local control away. And, you know, I'd really love to figure out, you know, whatever, what it takes for our state legislators to really start to address that and start to wrestle that back and not continuously hand it over to Salem and to the governor. Because when we can't even decide which trees get cut down in Tree City, USA Wilsonville, that's pretty shocking. The only other thing that, you know, the big one that came up during the session was HB 2025. Obviously, that was, you know, and that was kind of the big one we were all focused on. And then I saw HB 2258 come through, and I went, holy cow, we weren't even paying attention to that. I wasn't paying attention to that one. But, you know, but the transportation bill for me, as you know, I wrote opposition testimony to it. I felt like, for one, it was too much of a tax on our citizens, as Mayor O'Neil mentioned in our last meeting, talking about just the special session bill. We have a large segment of our population is rent burdened and considered low-income or in poverty. And something like this where, you know, we, a lot of us, you might be able to kind of think, oh, six cents a gallon, or, you know, I'll figure out a couple hundred bucks here or there. But for a lot of our citizens, that's a kick in the butt. So, that was why I wrote that opposition piece. And although in that last meeting, I advocated that we join the conversation, I'm still not happy with the bill that they're working on down there. And I don't know, hopefully, hopefully someone can figure it out in the next week or two before they reconvene for that final vote. Because that whole special session's just been a mess. But one of the things that I would like to see next year, as we go into, or into the next legislative sessions, is when those pieces of testimony are being sent to Salem that, that all, the entire council gets a copy of those as we go. It's, you know, trying to figure out which ones we're sending information on, or testimony one way or the other on, is, it's not, it's not an easy thing to keep track of. So, I would love to get copies of those as we go. And, you know, if something comes up where, you know, similar to the transportation bill that it just doesn't feel right, that it's not something that I could support, that I'd like to have the opportunity to be kind of abreast of that information and then be able to provide feedback as well. So, but thank you both for your work this session, and look forward to working with you both in the next session.
Great. Thank you.
And my closing thoughts did until...
I have one more thing to say before you close.
Can I?
Go for it. Yeah, you said closing, so go for it.
Well, you can go ahead if you're anxious.
No, go.
I just want to say that I felt glued to the hip with you and Mark during the entire legislative session. It was a great opportunity to see your work and appreciate Mark's work. And Everett may be new, but he's stepping up to the plate very well. You know, I think that home, a local rule, home rule is vital in order for cities to survive. The way we currently finance cities and that needs to change. There has to be a fix, and it starts with Salem. We have 1.1 to 1.5 million of unfunded mandates that are sinking our budget. So, things have to change. So, I totally appreciate your work, and I find it ironic. I joined Councilor Dunwell's position that they're probably going to call Wilsonville to be the, ask for input on how to remove a tree, let them place a tree, because we are pretty good at what we do. So, but anyway, thank you. Councilor Dunwell?
Thank you, Mayor.
As long as we're talking about money and fiscal responsibility, I was actually going to say this during my comments, but I think this is the right time to move it up. So, because what happens in Salem impacts Wilsonville clear and straight. At the end of the day, we have to think about where we're living in our own backyard. And so, I want to once again bring attention to the anticipated challenges facing our own general fund at the city. We did not grow our way out of the cyclical nature of the economy, because the economy grows and contracts. And the revenue challenges at the state and federal level are only increasing my own concerns for the future health and status of Wilsonville's primary operating fund. Quite frankly, we have not been able to stimulate the growth at the local level. We were not able to grow during a time when growth was happening all around us. And now, I'm going to talk about Town Center. Because the delays in the Town Center development cannot be underestimated. We are now lagging rather than leading in what is projected to be a down-cycle economy, and we are facing economic headwinds. For instance, CNBC's America's 25 Top States for Business, Oregon ranks as 39th. Guess who we're right ahead of? The coal country state of West Virginia, and we were 28th in 2024. In the late teens and the early twenties, Wilsonville was making future decisions with the belief that the Town Center master plan and Town Center urban renewal financing, that tool and Town Center itself would pay for the public infrastructure to support the plan and provide amenities to the public that has asked, and none of that has moved forward. This would have brought private development and helped solidify the city's general fund into the future. And let me say it again. Decisions were made with the belief, because the Town Center plan had been, the master plan had been passed and put into place in 2019, and now it is almost 2026, and nothing has happened. Where I stand on Town Center and urban renewal is actually irrelevant to what I'm talking about right now. So, don't, no one consider that I'm making a political position on where I stand on either. Rather than, I'm talking about the economic shortfall. So, rather than waiting for the two to three years to face a shortfall, because that's what, if we keep everything the way it is right now and nothing changes, that's where we will end up. I recommend that our staff continue to be mindful of those national and state economic climate trends and make careful decisions about adding pressure on the city's finances. This is our responsibility to our citizens and every single taxpayer in our city. And I have faith that our leadership, from our city manager through Keith Katko, in our accounting and finance group, and everyone else, will keep this top of mind as we move forward to make sure that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we are trying to claw back money that we've lost. So, that's all I have to say.
Councilor Dunwell, thank you. I think that's it. Appreciate.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Did we want to update on the transportation bill? Everett's got an update, I think.
Yeah, very quickly, since I know we're running along with this. As Councilor Cunningham pointed out, I've been sending you email updates, but for the record, the special session convened last week. The House, after several attempts at getting quorum, met, discussed, passed the bill. There was a public hearing on Sunday of Labor Day weekend. The Senate is now recessed until September 17th due to the absence of one of their members. So, they are going to meet every three days just to gavel in and gavel out to keep the special session going. And then they'll take up the bill on Wednesday, September 17th. So, if you have any questions about the transportation package, happy to answer them. Otherwise, that concludes our presentation, and thank you so much for the opportunity.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
So, you said that they had the public hearing?
Correct. There were two public hearings. One was on a Monday, the date is escaping me, in late August, and the second was this past Sunday, the 31st.
With it being on Labor Day weekend, were there very many people giving input?
I don't remember exactly how many people were there. It went for about three hours, though, of public comment, and then time for the committee to mark up the bill.
Thank you.
Councilor Barry, Mayor O'Neil, there were hundreds of people, and there was a lot of testimony. A lot of people were in the building. And so, this is all just in the House. So, and the House passed the bill with one Democrat voting against and one Republican voting for with a bare minimum amount. So, the Senate hasn't even brought the bill up yet, yet we have this delay. And so, I mean, there's just really a lot of speculation. I saw a number of my lobby colleagues yesterday, and nobody knows for sure what's going to happen, but everybody knows that this could be a very long, protracted process. And some of us remember, I think it was 2006, when we were in with four emergency special sessions trying to get the budget out. So, this does not portend well that we are at this point, and now we have a delay, maybe to the 17th and maybe even to legislative days, which are the 28th and 29th of September and October 1st. So, this could go on for a while.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, thank you, folks. Next up, sewer and storm system development charge update.
My name is Zach Weigl. I'm the Wilsonville City Engineer. And with me tonight is Zach Hazel with FCS Group, and I believe John Geller Ducci, also with FCS Group, is on, available, there he is, virtually. So, you may remember, in last June, we came before you to talk about the SDCs, and Zach and John gave a very detailed presentation on what SDC system development charges are, how they're applied, what they pay for, and then took a deep dive on the sewer and stormwater needs in the SDCs. So, now that we have the SDC methodology report completed, we've issued all the required notifications about a change in the SDC methodology, we have a public hearing scheduled for the next council meeting on September 15th to adopt the new SDCs. But before we got there, we wanted to have another meeting with council, another briefing to go through, kind of give you a refresher on the SDCs and the rates that we're looking at, go through some of the changes that were made, some of the updates that have been made since we last met, and some of the public engagement that has been done since then. So, as I said, Zach's going to do a very brief, we're not going to get into the weeds, spare you the details from last time on the SDCs, and take it away, Zach.
All right. Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. It's good to be back. So, on this next slide here, just a brief reminder of what the SDC calculation is composed of. We have the reimbursement fee, which is looking at the eligible value of the capacity remaining in your existing facilities. And then we have the improvement fee, which is the future-looking portion, looking at the cost of planned capacity-increasing projects in your various project lists. And we take the cost bases, those top parts, the numerators of these calculations, and we divide it by the expected growth in system demand, add them together, that gets you your SDC. That's kind of the basics of how the calculation works. And then, as another reminder, we've basically have, we have basically calculated the maximum defensible SDC. And you are not obligated to adopt the maximum defensible SDC. You can adopt anything up to it, including setting the SDCs to zero if you so want it. So, we're just showing you the maximum SDCs in these calculations. So, first up here, stormwater, just a quick reminder of how this one looks. On the top of this table, we have the cost bases. We have the improvement fee cost basis, looking at the project list, about $15 million of eligible costs there. A lot more costs on the project list are not eligible. We then remove the outstanding improvement fee fund balance of 2.3 million, just to avoid any double counting of projects that weren't completed in the last list. And then we add in the reimbursement fee cost basis, 14.6 million. That's looking at the capacity of your existing stormwater facilities. And once again, there's a lot more facilities that you currently have that don't have capacity that are not included here. And then the compliance costs there, $90,000. That's allowed by the statute, basically, for the calculation and implementation of the SDC program. So, the full cost basis is 27.4 million. And then we're going to take that and divide it by the expected growth in EDUs. EDUs are basically the average impervious surface area of a single-family dwelling unit. And that's basically how you measure capacity in a stormwater system, where you measure incremental capacity. So, dividing by that growth in EDUs, we get a total final charge. You see there of 3,500 per EU, which is what a typical single-family residence would pay at the maximum SDC that we're showing here. Okay, for the sewer SDC, this first section is a reminder of where we were. So, it has changed a little bit, which Zach will show you. But just as a reminder of how this works, we're doing the exact same calculation we just did for stormwater, but we're doing it for each function of sewer service. So, it looks a lot more complicated, but really, it's the same basic calculation, just looking at the different kinds of wastewater service that you're providing. So, the cost basis ranges from anywhere from 6.2 million up to 60.4 million dollars in total cost basis, depending on the different function. And what you'll see below that is the calculated charge, total SDC per unit at the very bottom. And this is given in terms of, for example, peak hourly flow in gallons per day or max month pounds per day. And this is all for charging high-strength industrial customers. So, that, yeah, so we're giving the city two options. The second slide here shows the schedule for, that would be, most people would pay of domestic strengths. And specifically, the single-family residents would most likely pay the top charge here, $15,000, again, at maximum SDC. The revisions that Zach will show you also includes a 3/4-inch meter. This one is just a 5/8-inch meter there. So, that's pretty much where I left you, and then we made a couple of changes. Jack will talk about.
Yeah, so, at the last work session meeting, we, the project team said that we would go back and look at the project list and make sure that everything on there makes sense. And so, we did that, and we were able to identify these three projects that could be removed. They are sewer lift stations that would serve just Frog Pond East, but they would serve a single development. So, they would typically be 100% developer responsibility. So, it's something that doesn't have to be in the SDC list. So, we did take a look at removing those projects from the list to see how that would impact the system development charges. And you can see, for the high-strength customers, it has some impact. It lowered the collection flow rate by $1.28 per peak hour flow gallons per day. But the main impact that would affect most people who pay SDCs is on the meter size. So, you can see that it did have quite a bit of significant change, especially for that single-family residential category of a 5/8-inch meter. So, a decrease of $1,200 from what was being proposed. I do want to mention, this is not in the packet. This is information that we just got within the last week. So, what we're looking for feedback from you tonight is to advance this updated project list and rate to the final adoption at the next meeting. And then, just wanted to touch on some of the public engagement work that's been going on since the work session back in June. We did issue the 90-day public notice. That's a requirement of state... That's a requirement of state law. Anytime you change the SDC methodology, interested parties have to be sent a 90-day public notice, which, that was completed on June 9th. And then we did, the city staff met with the Home Builders Association Greater Portland on June 24th to talk through the SDCs that are being proposed. And then on July 15th, we then followed up with the 60-day notice, and that's the point where we make the methodology report available for public review and comment. And then after people have a chance to digest that and formulate some questions and concerns, we held a SDC stakeholder meeting on August 5th. The summary of that meeting is in the packet, Exhibit B. And we invited developers, local developers, consulting engineering firms, anyone who's submitted a land use application or had a pre-application meeting recently within Wilsonville. So a pretty good discussion with the attendees at that meeting. We walked through the methodology report and had an opportunity to answer questions. So next steps, as I mentioned, we have the public hearing for adoption of the SDC rates scheduled for September 15th. If those rates are adopted, then they will go into effect on January 1st, 2026. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions and, again, like to get your feedback on the amended project list and proposed sewer rate.
Counselor Chevlin.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to our presenters today for walking us through this. My question is, it was shown about, that we needed, we could perhaps choose to not use the maximum allowable increase. What sort of calculations have you done that would show a less, smaller amount of increase? And what's the impact when that occurs?
Right. Yeah, very good question. So there's really two ways that sewer and stormwater are paid for. They're paid for by development through system development charges or through the utility rate, which is paid for by existing residents and businesses. So if you don't adopt the maximum defensible rate, that means the utility rate is being used to backfill that. So existing residences and businesses are funding some of those capacity-improving projects.
Thank you.
Counselor, you've done well.
Two questions. The first one is, is on page 204 of our packet, you have Exhibit 2.1, which has flows and loadings projections, and I see that you're projecting for 2024, 2045. Collection is doubled, pretty much. Treatment is up by, you know, yeah, 80%. Where did those numbers originate? Because when I look at, I come to the assumption that, you know, you're doubling the population during that period. And yet, we know that Oregon's population is currently showing a 0.5% annual increase after a decline in both 20 and 2021. But I'm not seeing that reflected in the projections. Is there a reason that you went with a higher number as opposed to historic growth?
Yeah, this, I'm going to try not to get into the weeds, but...
That's fine.
So when we, so the numbers come from the wastewater treatment master plan that was adopted in 2023, or from the 2023 wastewater treatment master plan. So when we look at what projects are needed, we look at the entire urban reserve. So anything that could potentially come into the city, into the urban growth boundary. So, so while the year, the growth, so that's assuming that the growth rate continued as it had been over the last 10 years, around 2.7%, I believe. What happens, though, is, in reality, you collect the SDCs when the projects are needed, right? So the timing of the growth in the calculation doesn't matter as much because you collect the SDC when you need the project, right? Does that make sense?
It totally makes sense. That's a fair response. I appreciate that. So we won't necessarily be over-collecting for the SDCs. And then to tag on to Counselor Chevlin's question or comment regarding the SDCs and how we're building those out, in, in page 215 in implementation, you say the city may also decide to phase in either or both SDCs to the maximum or allow lower target change over a period of time. What is the risk if we choose to phase in rather than set the maximum defensible SDCs now?
So if you were to phase in, say you wanted to do half the amount on January 1st and half the amount in July 1st, I think that's what we ended up doing on the parks SDC. What happens is that you're losing revenue by doing that, right? So then you're again, then having to backfill from the other, another source. I did run some quick numbers based on what we see, what the projections were for housing and development that we're expecting to occur between this fiscal year, July 1st, to next July 1st, 2026. If we were to do that, we would lose about $1 million in sewer SDC revenue.
So should that even be an option that's on the table?
Because the point is that you all get to decide.
Yes.
Thanks.
We're sensitive to the subject of increasing costs.
Sure.
Affordability.
Sure.
So we want to bring you as many options as we can.
Appreciate that.
And you can consider, and I think staff would prefer that we just have as much funding as we can get, but at the same time, there's other considerations for you.
So if we, we're funding with the maximum SDCs, and if we have excess SDCs, can we use that to fund capital?
Only the, only the improvement fee can, or I'm sorry, the reimbursement portion, where you're, you're, basically, they're buying into the capacity that we already have. That can be used for maintenance and operations, I believe. Is that correct? Yeah, but other than that...
But it can't be used for capital projects, future capital projects.
No, I think you could use reimbursement for either or, can't you?
You can't use SDCs for operations. You can only use SDCs for projects on the project list, but to your point, you can use reimbursement fees for the ineligible portions of projects, the projects that are about deficient infrastructure, for example.
Right. You can, you can use that for that specific SDC. You couldn't use it for, you couldn't use sewer for parks, or you can't, you can't use it to build a trail like Portland did, I believe, several years ago. Those things get you in trouble.
Super helpful. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Yeah, so we'll come back on the September 5th with a public hearing with the, with the utility, or with the rates that we presented tonight, unless we have not heard different from doing that, so.
I'll just say that we need to continue the communication, if it be the Home Builders Association, which I've met with, I think Counselor Denham also met with. We need to continue the communication with our community about, you know, the higher rates and what we're facing with the utility costs and everything else. We just need to continue that dialogue so people understand that. That's my view. But we're kind of caught in a bind without moving forward. So thank you.
Yeah, just for the record, I've never met with the HBA.
Okay. Excuse me. Do you stand corrected? Thank you. Okay, next up, draft natural area management plan.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Kerry Rappold. I'm the Natural Resources Manager. And with me here tonight are Tommy Reader from Parks and Recreation, and then the consultant team from Ash Creek Forest Management, Lauren Smith and Cam Oster. So we want to walk you through tonight, if I can get the presentation up here. And let's see here. We want to walk you through tonight the draft that we have and give you a chance to, let's hope this works. There we go. So yes, we've been in the process now for, well, it's a little over a year, or maybe a little bit more than that. And the idea here is to create a management plan for our natural areas, which encompass, you know, a good part of the city, certainly. Includes places like Memorial Park, the Beckman Creek Corridor, Tranquil Park, Park at Maryfield. And so we've seen a lot of changes in the last five to 10 years, especially in terms of what we call emerging risk. And that has associated with things like pests. You've probably heard of Mediterranean oak borer, Emerald ash borer, things that could potentially have a devastating effect to, you know, our natural areas within the community. But one of the conversations that's really come up a lot recently, too, especially with the community, is the idea of wildfire risk and where people live close to these natural areas. What does that mean in terms of what should we be doing to manage those? And so this plan really took a very close look at that, both in terms of, you know, where people are located and how their relationship to those natural areas, as well as what we should be thinking about, you know, in terms of these pests, especially as you've seen with Mediterranean oak borer. Unfortunately, we've lost some of our older oak trees, one being recently at the high school that had to be taken down. And so we want to think proactively and look at ways that, you know, we can manage effectively, but also anticipate the changes that are occurring and what might be necessary to do today, but also what's necessary to do in the 10 to 20 years. So I'm going to hand it over to Lauren and her team, and they'll walk you through the presentation, give you an idea of the process that we went through, as well as the components of the plan.
Great. Thanks, Kerry, for the introduction. Hi, my name is Lauren. I'm the project ecologist at Ash Creek Forest Management. Just to give you a little background on Ash Creek, we're a local habitat restoration company and ecological consulting company. Ash Creek's been in the industry for about 25 years, and we're super excited to share the draft and get your feedback. So like Kerry mentioned, this plan is designed to be a tool and a framework for the city to make natural area management decisions and devise strategies to steward its natural areas in a cohesive and appropriate way. There's a lot of components that went into developing this plan, and Cam is going to start off with kind of walking you through some of the initial research and on-the-ground work that we did, and then I'll get into some of the management objectives and strategies that we've outlined.
Yeah, so to start you from the beginning, one of the primary objectives of the plan was to build a catalog of all of the natural areas owned and managed by the city of Wilsonville. So first, we identified all city-owned tax lots, and then to narrow that down, we looked for areas that are greater than half an acre of continuous habitat and have relatively intact native habitat. So that eliminated areas like right-of-way zones and hardscaped playgrounds, that sort of thing, and resulted in this list of the 14 highest priority natural areas owned and managed by the city. And then, yeah, on to the next slide. To get a better picture of what those, the current habitat function of those 14 natural areas, and inform where and how much resources to use in management of those areas, we started with surveying habitat conditions. So we went out and did vegetative surveys, looking primarily at native and non-native vegetative cover, as well as species diversity and tree and canopy quality throughout the parks. And the results of those surveys, we scored the parks into good, fair, and poor habitat condition. So this informs management and restoration, because good and fair natural areas generally have a higher return on investment in the resources you invest into management. Poor-quality habitats are generally less cost-effective and require longer timeframes in restoration. That's not to say that they're not worthy of resources in management, but it guides management in deciding the timelines and amount of effort you're wanting to invest in a park. And then on to the next slide, the last piece of on-the-ground work we did was habitat delineations. So we used our vegetative and botanical surveys from habitat conditions, as well as satellite imagery and historical soil survey data from USDA to define different habitat types throughout these natural areas, and landed with this list of seven with varying acreages. Defining different habitat types also helps inform management strategies. For example, managing wildfire risk looks very different in a wetland versus an upland meadow versus a conifer forest. It's also helpful to define habitat types for community engagement, for example, highlighting endangered habitats such as oak savannas. I'll hand it back over to Lauren.
Another important aspect of developing this management plan was community engagement. Natural areas are an invaluable resource for communities, and so we really wanted to make sure that we were engaging with the community during this process and creating a transparent and inclusive process. And so some of the pieces of that, we created a Let's Talk Wilsonville page that highlights project updates and events, and we also published a public survey that I'll talk about on the next slide a little bit more. And then we published three Boone's Ferry Messenger press releases highlighting those upcoming events and highlighting project updates. Earlier this year in April, we also hosted an open house here at City Hall. And then we also participated in Earth Day in 2024, and then the Earth Day slash Work Day this, this year in 2025. So for the public survey, we got 16 responses. The questions in the survey really focused on trying to understand the public's main concerns and priorities and vision for future work in natural areas. Most common concern, as we kind of expected, was wildfire risk. Due to the nature of Wilsonville and the urban and natural area boundaries that exist in the city and the proximity between those two, we really, it makes sense that wildfire risk is a high priority. Following wildfire risk, invasive species, unmanaged recreation, and vandalism were common concerns as well. In terms of priorities for future work, several respondents noted more recreation trails and more access to natural areas and improvements in pollinator habitat as priorities. So to tie all this together, we outlined and identified six management objectives for the city's natural areas. These include enhancing ecological processes and improving native vegetation communities, controlling native and, sorry, invasive and noxious weed populations, improving ecosystem resilience to climate change, reducing wildfire risk, proactively managing for emerging risks and, such as pests and diseases, and providing the public with safe and accessible opportunities to recreate, learn, and be stewards of their natural areas. So with those six objectives, we then devised quite a number of strategies. I'm not going to go through all of them because there's, there's quite a few, but I'll highlight some examples. We have general strategies, and we also have habitat-specific strategies. So these general strategies are designed to help the city work towards those six primary objectives. This includes things like planting native species to improve biodiversity, using integrated pest management strategies to manage invasive species, removing ladder fuels and planting fire-resistant native species to reduce wildfire risk, developing proactive management strategies for things like Emerald ash borer, improving interpretive signage or adding interpretive signage to natural areas to promote community engagement, and also working with local organizations like HOAs to promote natural area management and community involvement. to promote natural area management and community involvement. And then, as Cam mentioned, there's a lot of different habitat types in Wilsonville, and each is likely to require unique restoration strategies or management strategies. For example, a riparian forest versus an upland forest is going to require different native species during revegetation. There's wildly different invasive species that would need to be managed in those habitat types. And then oak woodlands and savannas, for example, are going to require special attention to things like the Mediterranean oak borer and management of that, and then also management in a way that mimics natural fire regimes, which is how historically that ecosystem specifically is managed and maintained. So lastly, I'll talk a little bit about funding opportunities and some of the funding behind restoration and natural area management work. We created cost estimates for four general categories of restoration work. These include site preparation, ladder and wildfire fuel removal, planting, and maintenance work. Each of these categories is split by habitat quality. This is because, like Cam mentioned, a high-quality habitat or good-quality habitat in this case is likely going to require less site preparation, for example, than a site that has super-high invasive cover and falls into that poor category. And the timelines for those are also going to be wildly different. So that's why those rates are split. And then lastly, we wanted to highlight some potential funding sources for the city to pursue, to supplement and fund natural area management work. These include grants from the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board, the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, Metro, the Oregon Invasive Species Council, the Oregon Wildlife Fund, the Arbor Day Foundation, and others. And with that, that concludes our presentation. So I'm happy to answer any questions or any feedback.
Counselor Chevlin.
Thank you, and thank you all for your presentation. I really enjoyed reading through it prior to tonight's session. It's more of a comment that how lucky we are to have a city that places a priority on these healthy places, areas to recreate. As a retired healthcare professional, I look at communities as to what do they offer in the way of healthy places to live, to enjoy, not only just to work, of course, but also to be able to enjoy ourselves. So I'm very appreciative of the fact that we have a plan such as this, and we'll be hearing shortly our draft climate action plan, where we're called to make sure that we have enough green spaces to offset the effects of climate and greenhouse gases, et cetera. So I'm just very pleased that we have this opportunity. I'm not sure that our citizens always recognize that, and perhaps some of us here too, that how important it is to maintain these and to manage them. Now, Carrie, I do have a question.
Sure.
It just popped up, if, and I'm sure it was in the packet, but boy, I did a lot of reading. If we don't receive some of the grant funding, how do we make up the balance?
Well, I might ask Tommy to help me answer this question. But yeah, so really, the key to this plan is how we strategically approach these natural areas and how we prioritize them. So, you know, we'll be looking at, you know, specific areas in terms of like, where do we need to really target this funding that we have, whether it's something that we have at the local level or something that we might be able to obtain, you know, outside the city. So one thing I might mention, which I think will position us better in the future in terms of some external funding, I've been working with the group for about a year now, and we're starting to look at the potential for having a watershed council for the city of Wilsonville. And I want to bring more information to the council, but we're just starting that process. And so this group was able to get a $200,000, $200,000 funded through the state to look at how this might be structured in terms of a watershed council. And so it'd incorporate two smaller watershed councils and basically the west tributaries of the Willamette River. And so that would really put us in a much better position going forward in terms of seeking funding from something like OWEB, the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board, or some of the major foundations. And so I'm really excited about that, what that could mean for the city and how it could position ourselves. But I'll let Tommy actually answer this question, too.
Yes, good evening. Yeah, we're excited about this plan. So part of the issues in the past were we didn't have a plan. So a lot of our natural areas management came from citizen concern of what's in their backyard. We've always had operational money that we spent on this.
Throughout the year, but now we know where to focus it more through, as you noticed, higher-quality natural areas are cheaper and easier to maintain. So we can shift our focus more to those areas. And as we kind of win back some of these areas, start shifting to the poorer maintenance natural areas. But currently, it's our maintenance operational fund. But yes, grants are always good, but now at least we have a plan on where to focus that.
Counselor Cunningham.
Thank you. Yeah, for me, as we talk about the priorities around this, you know, I really appreciate this plan. It's very in-depth. But some of the concerns that I've heard in the last eight months that I've been on council have revolved around wildfire. And then the other one that was mentioned in the presentation was the unmanaged recreation. And so, one, the wildfire, the major concern actually being something that's a little bit outside of our control over at Graham Oaks Park. And Mayor O'Neill and I went on a kind of a hands-on tour with some of the neighbors over there and heard their concerns about the wildfire risk that Graham Oaks presents to that area. And it was, it was pretty eye-opening to see the management that's been done on our part on, which park is that?
Park at Maryfield.
Yeah, Park at Maryfield. Because you know exactly where the line is, where our management ends and Metro's begins at Graham Oaks Park. And so, you know, kind of outside of the scope of what we're controlling here, that's definitely a concern that remains. I know over the Fourth of July weekend, that continued to be a concern for neighbors out in that area that an airwork or something could go off. And it's a tinderbox. And it really does highlight, if anybody's interested, to go out there and take a walk and see just what good management versus poor management is. Because the management that's occurred at Graham Oaks Park has been not very well done. And so I think as a city, we also need to continue to push on Metro and ensure that they're doing their part to manage their natural resources that neighbor ours. On the unmanaged recreation part, the other concerns that I heard, another part that's in here is the Beckman Creek area. And the neighbors that back up to that Beckman Creek area have concerns about, you know, that trail that's going to go through there. You know, we're running a 12, 15-foot-wide asphalt road through their backyards, something that when they went out there and bought their homes, wasn't there. And it was just kind of quiet, and they expected that was the way it was going to be. The actions that we're taking and putting in that trail, as, you know, for all the pros and cons to that trail, we do have some impact on the neighbors out there that need to be addressed. And some of those being that unmanaged recreation, where people, they're not even allowed to build fences on their property for the most part because they're in an SROZ. And so whatever we can do to look at that area as we look at planting and managing our natural resources there to help create, you know, help to be smart about how we create an environment that is beautiful, yet also respects those homeowners and the property that they share with us in the SROZ, and also allows them to protect themselves and create security for themselves and their families.
A response in terms of, I've been working with Metro. They're actually in the process of updating their conservation plan for Graham Oaks. And so they're very aware that, you know, wildfire risk is certainly a big concern among our community. And so we'll be tracking that very closely in terms of, you know, what they prepare in terms of updating that plan and how it addresses those issues. Sure.
I will only comment that it's probably because Counselor Cunningham and I were pretty communicative of our concerns when we were out on that tour. So I hope they do, because that is a problem. And to Counselor Cunningham's point, there has been a fire from fireworks in Graham's Oaks Park. Remember, it was right across the street from where we live, so, but thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, thank you for the report. I think it's really important that you can't solve a problem unless you're able to study it and identify it. And so taking the inventory is like a really great start to understand and then to recognize that we're having climate change and the pests that have been invaded and that could get worse. I appreciate that. I think one of the comments you made was that on your inventory of rating the different areas that were good and not so good and were problem areas. I think it was noted that Marazzi Park was not so good. Is that right? That it needed attention? I was just curious what that meant. I may have misunderstood.
There, these rating, the rating scale for these habitat conditions taken to account a lot of different pieces. And at least historically, Marazzi Plaza, I know, has had relatively high amounts of invasive species like blackberry. And there's a species of noxious weed called lesser salendine that is an early-detection, rapid-response species as well that I know the city is actively, or has actively worked on treating in the past. And a lot of what goes into that habitat condition rating is the ratio of native and non-native species. And the, yeah, I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, that does. Thank you. I appreciate that.
If I could add, all of these surveys were done in the summer of 2024. And I have noticed you'll have done a lot of restoration work at Marazzi Plaza. I saw goats out eating blackberry this past summer. So condition might have changed.
And with all of this, too, this plan is designed to be kind of reassessed throughout. And habitat conditions are always changing, whether you're doing restoration work or not. So we really want to encourage adaptive management throughout this whole process and adapting to those changing conditions.
And just a quick comment on that. So as we said, this has been ongoing for about a year, year and a half. So we've seen some of the studies, and that's how we've been able to start focusing some of our management, is that we saw the research, and instead of spreading the resources around, start to focus that on specific areas. So the plan is already helping with our management.
Counselor Dunwell.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing up Graham Oaks Park. I know that we've had citizens and citizen comments reiterate to us over and over again that they are adjacent to Graham Oaks. And a lot of it still hasn't been cleaned up. And so if you, as you collaborate and partner and advise our friends at Metro, can you help them also prioritize what gets done first? Because I see particularly in Costa Circle, it is literally a tinderbox right across the street. And that is edging inhabited homes in Villeboise. So, you know, anything you can do to, you know, influence them to make that also a very high priority. And then I do have a comment for you. When all of the work happened at Adelweiss Park, I think, what was that, two years ago? And you did all the clearing out. Great job, by the way. There was a lot of noise within the community about, oh, my gosh, they're tearing down our beautiful park, and they're removing all of the, you know, beautiful green leaves that made it so gorgeous and all of these small trees. We know what you were doing, and the intent was exactly what it was supposed to be. You mentioned that you partner with or you work with the HOAs. Is there like a fact sheet or something when you're getting ready to do a residential restoration, and this may be more of a unique case, to allow the HOAs to educate the impacted neighborhoods, to let them know that, no, this is why we're doing it, and this is the value. We are protecting your home, and we're also protecting that forest in that park.
I can't speak exactly to what the city has done in the past or at that park specifically, but that is something that we, in this plan, are encouraging the city to do going forward with natural area management. In our work at Ash Creek, we have certainly worked on projects where the organization will put up signs in the park or wherever the management is happening that provides people with information or a place to go to get more information or someone to talk to.
Yeah, and we're already anticipating. We're working on the new Frog Pond Park in Frog Pond West. And about a half of that park site is going to be meadow restoration. But it's actually going to take a little time to make that happen. And so when people go out there, they're going to see something that might not quite look like a meadow because it's in process of eliminating weeds and things that, you know, would impede that. So we've already talked about more in terms of like signage and trying to make people aware that these entail a process. And so what you see today may not be, you know, what's there in the future, certainly.
Yeah, getting ahead of it with the neighborhood, I think, is really helpful. And there's such an education component about, oh, you know, things like why that green stuff growing up the tree, and it's so pretty, and now you made it go away.
Right.
Yeah, signage and communication is really helpful. But thank you for all the work you've done. Any other questions? Okay, moving on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Draft Climate Action Plan.
So I'm going to stay up here. Let me just get the next. So joining me should be, hopefully, yep, she's queued up there. Well, once again, good evening, mayor and members of the council. My name is Carrie Rappel, Natural Resources Manager. And with me here tonight is Moria Brown. She's with Sustainability Solutions Group, and she's the lead consultant for the project. And so tonight, we want to walk you through where we're at with... Oh, yep, I knew I was going to do that. I'm sorry. Let's see here. The transitions are always the most difficult. One minute if you apologize for that. Thank you. So we want to walk you through tonight where we're at as far as the Draft Climate Action Plan. So this process has been underway for about a year and a half also. It corresponds fairly closely with the draft area, or the Draft Natural Area Management Plan. And so we just want to give you an idea, you know, the process that we've gone through creating the plan, what's in the plan, but in many ways, what's as important, what's not in the plan, and what we would still need to develop in terms of trying to implement this plan. So this plan really lays out a framework for how we would address climate action. And it sets in place some actions, categories of actions. There's five categories that we'll walk you through. And those were modeled as part of this plan. But really, the steps that'll take us forward in terms of implementing this plan are what are called implementation measures. And those implementation measures give more of the detail of what's contained within those actions. But there's a future step that we'll have to take in terms of quantifying that and what that means in regards to each action. And also, how do we take this forward in terms... And also, how do we take this forward in terms of not only the governance, but the fiscal aspects, and, you know, the timeline that's associated with those? So, there are steps that would need to be, you know, put into place yet, and things that we would have to do. And one of the ways that we've kind of looked at this is that it gives, especially when it comes to the implementation measures, it gives kind of a menu for the council to look at, and to look at those in the way that, you know, you have the ability to influence, and it's your decision process in terms of where we go with those implementation measures. So, we would be revisiting this again on a number of occasions with the council, but this really gives us the basis for starting in terms of that climate action plan, and what it's going to mean going forward. So, we're going to go through tonight the context and the components of that plan, basically what we learned in terms of public feedback. We had two surveys that took place in terms of the community surveys, but we also tried to reach out to the, to the businesses, to the industry within Wilsonville, and we had an open house, and, you know, we shared this through Let's Talk. And then, like I said, there's these broad categories of actions, basically five categories that we'll give you more information about. And then, how do we integrate this, as I said, going forward in terms of what we do in the future? Because this plan has a long horizon of 25 years. And so, just like the natural area management plan, there's a lot of time that will be have to be devoted to this, and a lot of decisions in terms of what council wants to do in regards to the plan. So, really, this comes back to the city council goal, that was for '23, '25 fiscal years, and the idea of creating this plan for the city, but it's really governed in many ways by the governor's executive order, and in terms of what goals should we try to achieve by 2035 within 10 years, and then by 2050 within 25 years. And so, the actions that were selected and that are identified in the plan relate directly back to this executive order in terms of the 45% reduction from 1999 levels by 2035, and the 80% reduction from 1990 levels by 2050. And so, that's what was modeled in terms of those actions, and how do we get there? So, it provides that pathway in terms of doing that. So, hopefully, this gives, this plan can be somewhat confusing in terms of what's an action versus an implementation measure. And so, if we think about it, on the left-hand side here is just what I said in terms of, we started with the council goal, we started with the governor's executive order, and then we looked at these various scenarios in terms of, what if we just use what's currently in place? What would that get us in terms of addressing climate action? And then there's the second aspect of using things such as like greening the grid, that's going to happen within Oregon, and, you know, there's a timeline associated with that, but it doesn't really take into account other local actions that we could take. And that's where we get to this idea of low-carbon scenario and the low-carbon actions. And so, that's really what's identified in the plan, in those five categories. And within those are specific actions also, and then ultimately, what it leads to is this idea of the implementation measures, which are in the appendix at the back of the plan. And so, all of these were vetted, not only with, you know, the community, but we had a staff advisory committee, where we had representation from different departments. So, we looked at those very closely in terms of how would we go about achieving what we have identified in terms of implementation measures at this point. But then there would be this next step, really, in terms of looking at, you know, implementation of the plan, and what that means in terms of, you know, who would take leads in terms of these implementation measures? What would be the governance in terms of that? And then the fiscal aspect, and also, you know, what would be the timeline associated with it? So, it's, it's a very involved process, and in many ways, it's, it's hard to get your, your head around it, because it's so comprehensive. It takes into account really everything that we as human beings are involved with, and that we as a city, you know, are potentially involved with or are involved with. So, I'm going to let Moria take it over at this point, and she'll take you through some of the information within the plan, some of the references that you've probably noted within the plan, too.
Sure, thanks, Carrie. Yes, at this point in the presentation, we want to give you a little bit of information about what climate change is expected to look like in Wilsonville. This information has been drawn from a national portal called the Climate Explorer, and it summarizes for all communities in the U.S. how the climate is expected to change in a variety of ways. We've listed six of them here, and I want to draw your attention just to the one on the second row, hot days. And what this graphic tells us is, it gives us a comparison between the average conditions that Wilsonville has experienced in the past up to 1990 versus what the various models that scientists use to project future climate conditions are expecting to see in Wilsonville from 2050 on. And so, in the case of hot days, they've defined this as being days on which the maximum temperature exceeds 90 degrees. And on an average basis in the past, Wilsonville experienced four days like this every year. But by 2050, we're expecting to see more than four times that, so about 17 days a year when the temperature is going to hit a maximum of 90 or higher. And I draw your attention to that one in particular, because it's probably the most dramatic change that we see of this set here, but it also means more than simply that summers are going to become warmer and have more warmer days. It also means that there's going to be a greater demand for energy in order to keep spaces cool. Air conditioning is going to be used more, and so there's going to be additional, an additional need for energy and, and an additional strain on the electricity grid to run air conditioning units. It's also going to mean that people who can't afford air conditioning are, are going to be looking for cool places, and that energy costs are going to be rising, because there's going to be greater demand. So, something that looks simple on the surface is going to have many implications for our communities. Next slide, please. This one goes back to you, Carrie.
So, yes, as I mentioned, we had a number of questionnaires that, you know, we did with the community. Last fall, we did the initial community questionnaire. We only had about 16 respondents, so we felt like that wasn't certainly sufficient, and we did another questionnaire this spring, and we had, we did a mailing to every household within the community to let them know about the questionnaire, and then we received 178 responses through that. But then we also put up some iPads at, at City Hall and at the library, and so it gave people a chance to take that survey. It was intended to be a three-question survey, but for some reason, it ended up allowing people to take the full survey also. But we also got an additional 48 responses with that, and so, you know, it brought us well over 200 people. I know that's still, you know, a small subsample of the city, but I think what we see in terms of those surveys, the survey from 2023 is one that we did in conjunction with Clackamas County when they were developing their plan, and so that was the original input that we got in terms of climate action planning for the city. But overall, we can see that, you know, the public, you know, feels that either it's a very important topic, or somewhat important, and it's something that, you know, they're focused on. And if you read the responses in terms of those surveys or questionnaires, you'll see that there's a number of things that we've just talked about tonight. Wildfire risk comes up quite a bit, the increase in temperature, some of the things that, you know, Moria showed in her slide. So, it's, it's, it's pretty compelling to read, you know, what the community feels about what they've seen so far in terms of climate change. So, I'll let Moria take the slides. I think you're...
Me. There we go. Okay, on the next slide here, we see some of the results that we got from our modeling. We modeled a number of different future scenarios for Wilsonville, and this first one is, we prefer to as the business-as-usual scenario, and it basically describes what we would expect to have happen from an emissions perspective if we do nothing. And that means if we keep living life the way we do currently, we use our vehicles as much as we do now, we continue to use primarily internal combustion engine vehicles, and we don't do any of the switching over to renewable energy sources and make the changes that we're going to describe in this plan. In that case, what we see is that emissions rise by 7% by 2030, and by almost 20% by 2050. And that will, that's a reflection of the, the population growth that's expected for the community, as well as the economic development, and then the additional energy use and emissions that comes with, with that growth. So, additional waste that's produced and taken to landfills, additional traffic congestion, all of those things are, are built into this, this scenario. Now, we contrast that with the one that we call the low-carbon scenario, which contains the 10 actions that we describe in the plan. In this scenario, we can see that emissions decrease very rapidly, so that by 2030, we've got a 41% reduction, and by 2050, we're at 83%. And this is the only scenario we managed to model where we actually reached the state's goal and exceeded it slightly of having at least an 80% reduction by 2050. And when you look at the different sectors there, you can see that transportation on the bottom, the blue sector, is the one that was most challenging for us to, to achieve sufficient reductions with. All of the others, we managed to do a lot with, and a lot of that is due to the state's commitment to green the electricity grid. So, that's going to be a very important supporting factor in, in helping Wilsonville achieve its goals. So, the implementation, or the actions, I'm sorry, that we modeled for you fell into five broad categories. The first is buildings and industry, the second is transportation, the third is renewable energy, the fourth is solid waste, and the fifth is green infrastructure. When we talk about each of these, we're generally talking about, first of all, reducing the energy consumption overall in each of these areas, and then switching to renewable energy sources. So, that applies across many of them. In the case of solid waste, it's a little bit different. We're not talking about energy sources, we're talking about emissions that come out of landfills. And so, in that case, we're talking about better ways to manage our waste so that it doesn't produce emissions that escape into the atmosphere, and we're also talking about just a general reduction in the amount of waste that we produce. Green infrastructure relates back to Carrie's earlier presentation this evening, and the value that natural spaces can have to sequester emissions, so to actually absorb some of the greenhouse gas emissions that we're producing, but also to clean the air, to reduce the amount of money that we need to spend on water filtration or stormwater systems as the climate changes. Enhancing and maintaining that green infrastructure is also an important part of that. So, as you progress with this plan in the future, the way this will come back to you or the way that you'll, you'll see, experience it with city administration is they may bring forward projects such as a proposal to improve the energy efficiency of city buildings, and that is going to be an action that will not only reduce your emissions, but it'll also save operational costs by reducing the, the energy that you need to consume to keep those buildings warm and cold.
So, we'll just finish up here with this idea, how do we integrate, you know, this plan into what the city's currently doing or what they're going to do in the future? And certainly, you know, the direction, the, the support that we receive from the federal level, and, you know, especially when we're looking at the state level in terms of the governor's executive order, those are pretty critical, and, you know, are extremely critical. And so, whatever financing, whatever support that could come through that, and whatever legislation that comes in the future. But then there's this aspect of what we're going to do at the local level, and, you know, what do we need to look at in terms of our own zoning and permitting, as some of the measures, you know, reflect that type of approach? There's programs, programmatic aspects. Right now, SMART has their own climate action plan that was incorporated into this plan, and so they've done a lot in terms of, you know, shifting to different types of fuel-efficient or, you know, zero-emission vehicles. And then there's this aspect of working with the public and creating education, or even in the case of incentives, you know, how could we work with our local, you know, businesses to create incentives that they would pursue, pursue things that are consistent with this plan? But then ultimately, it comes back to the leadership, and that leadership really, it starts with the city council in terms of the direction that you want to take with this, and, you know, where we go forward in terms of the work that staff does with this, the engagement that we do with the community. And really, that's, that's your decision process in terms of how we carry forward with these implementation measures, and what they mean ultimately in regards to the actions. So, we can take your questions. Thank you.
Councilor Dunwell.
You knew I'd say, have something to say. I, from an experience perspective, I, I see the viability and the possibilities with all of these reductions, except for transportation, in Wilsonville. We're a commuter city. And, and I'm glad that we're, you know, the statement was, it was 10% of our trips would be transitioning to public transportation as opposed to private. And I think that that will be a challenge just to even get there, because as I've said for the last two and a half years, Wilsonville has a last-mile problem, and no matter how well we build out SMART, we don't have a structure here where people can go to the market every day. And I work in downtown Portland, and I see, there are the little markets everywhere. People can just walk there, or take, you know, grab a bus, be, be home in 10 minutes. Here, it's a much bigger challenge, so you don't go to the grocery stores often. There are no little local markets that carry fresh produce and things like that, which makes it a real challenge. And what I am also concerned about is, and I didn't see a lot of comment regarding about moving into electric vehicles. I'm always concerned about that, because the burden of the cost of an electric vehicle really prohibits our individuals who are at lower, our lowest in, even our middle income in many ways, prohibits them from actually being able to purchase those, those vehicles. And they have a completely different life, so they, you're not going to see them on the road typically in 20 years because of the cost and the, I think it's a 10-year vehicle for the most part with the battery life. So, I, I, I don't know where our limitations are, because I know that that is such a significant contributor. Everything you look at, I, I completely support where you're going with this, and yet I, I just, I, I scratch my head, because I don't know if in Wilsonville, we can ever achieve the transportation problem unless something significantly changes in how our city is structured.
I, I don't disagree with what you've said. I think that the transportation aspect is going to be extremely challenging, and it's going to be dependent in, in some ways, too, on, you know, changes that occur within the marketplace as far as what vehicles are available, and how rapidly that progresses. But I know even like with our discussions with SMART in terms of what this means, in terms of certainly, you know, zero-emission vehicles, you know, some of these things don't exist at this point in term, in terms of what they can actually procure. And so, you know, some of these things might be a slower transition than others, but I think it's important, as you've seen, like, you know, with overall reduction, transportation is the biggest share, and whatever we can continue to do and continue to focus on is going to be really important with that part of it.
Councilor Shablon.
Thank you. And thank you, Carrie, for the report, and also to Moria for her part in it as well. I want to just step back just a little bit and, and note the components of the planning paradigm that you used for the climate action plan. I really liked that, and this addresses, I believe, some of those difficult changes that Councilor Dunwell is referring to, and there is no easy answer to it. But the fact that we, where we can, we can avoid certain elements that contribute to the, the climate challenges. We reduce when we can, we remove items when we can or elements, and then we offset elements. So, I liked that approach. If I'm someone that can only afford at this time in my life... If I'm someone that can only afford at this time in my life, a combustion engine, gas guzzling vehicle that's held together, you know, with string and baling wire, that might be the best I can do. We can hope though, that the industry will begin to change so that citizens will be able to purchase perhaps a, a used, a hybrid vehicle. Some of those types of things can be available as we move into the future. I believe it's important for us to look at the whole picture and see what can we do now? What can we start with? I appreciated the urgency in the report about not sitting on this for a long period of time and worrying about what we're going to do. So I wanted to share a real quick little story, a personal story. I didn't think my husband would ever want to give up his gas-powered leaf blower, but for Father's Day a few years ago, I bought an electric one and I bought an extra battery pack for it so he wouldn't have the excuse of, well, the thing doesn't last long enough. So he's always got an extra battery ready. Well, he got, he, he has embraced that thing. So we have not only the gas emission has been removed, but also the noise pollution. I believe it's Portland that's phasing now toward the, um, not, I think it's 25, 26 was their plan to phase out the gas-powered lawn equipment or power, power equipment. There was no mention of that here in this report, or at least I apologize if I missed that. But, and there's a lot of implications. I mean, we have your commercial landscape architects that, that's their business and then how do they afford to transition to the, this new equipment that may or may not have the, just the generation, the, the capacity to be able to blow leaves the way the gas-powered ones do. But I know that, for example, in probably Portland and other parts of the country where decisions have been made by municipalities to phase these gas-powered lawn equipment out and move in the electric, that there are special prices that can be made to the commercial buyer so that they can have an offset on the price so that they can transition. So those are the types of things that, while we can't probably fix all the transportation piece, even when you look at the chart, the transportation has the least amount of decline because there's just so much there in the transportation. But we can be so grateful that our SMART program has done such an excellent job in moving to, um, you know, low emissions or no emission vehicles, electric vehicles. And then we can begin to take a look at what are the other things that we can look at our, our public works building. My goodness, what a, what a beautiful example of what new building, uh, buildings should look like as far as energy efficiency. So all of those pieces are important for us to be able to understand and begin to implement where we can and then understand that those gas-powered, um, vehicles that we're driving may take a while to, to decrease. Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's an excellent point and I think it speaks to, to the, you know, the influence that the council and the community will have going forward to in terms of maybe other implementation measures and how we go about achieving, you know, the actions that are in the plan. So I think that's really worth noting.
Counselor Cunningham.
Thank you. So right off the bat in opening this report, the, the very first page of text includes a disclaimer and liability and, and I've read it multiple times and I'm struggling to kind of understand, um, this disclaimer. I don't think that we've ever seen a disclaimer or liability like this in any, any report that the city's ever paid for like this. And it, it basically says, I mean, it's presented on the screen here so everyone can read it, but I'm trying to understand because the, um, the second sentence in the second paragraph says, "The authors do not accept responsibility for the use of this analysis for any purpose other than that stated above." And, and it continues on. And I don't see a purpose stated above. Um, so I'm trying to understand, um, what, what this, with this disclaimer and liability, what this entire analysis is for? I, I understand overall, but this disclaimer and liability really just kind of threw me for a loop. I even, I mean, I had a chat with AI about it to see if I was just not thinking through this correctly. And, um, so I don't know if that's something that Ms. Braun can...
I, yeah, I think I'd let Ms. Braun speak to it since it's, you know, something that they've added to the report.
Sure, yeah, I can address that. The intention of this disclaimer is to recognize primarily that this document contains a lot of projections forward. It uses sophisticated software to come up with those projections, but they are for the purposes of planning actions that you can take to reduce emissions. So they are not for the purposes, for example, of, um, uh, doing structural engineering projects, for example, based on, as an example, the climate information that I shared on that one slide. So the level of specificity, the level of precision and the timelines used are very much geared to provide you with the best possible guidance to take climate action. They are not sufficient to do other types of activities that a city would engage in like planning, um, planning new transportation networks, for example, or planning the specific retrofits that you would want to make to a building to make it as energy efficient as possible. We use some general guidelines to give you these projections, but we wouldn't want you to go and think that the numbers we used in this projection would be applicable to every single building exactly. We would want you to go and evaluate each building individually and come up with a plan for that building. So that's the kind of difference that we're trying to articulate here to make sure that you understand that the, the level of information we're giving you here is appropriate for this purpose, but may not be appropriate for others.
Thank you. Um, okay, well, that, that's, that's kind of where AI got me. It, it basically said that cautions against decisions like detailed design or engineering, financial or budgetary commitments, et cetera. And so, you know, as, as we look at this, you know, I know there was that, um, that infographic that showed the historical numbers versus the future projections. And I just want to, I just want to be cautious that, you know, as, as we look at options to help, you know, become more resilient on this front and that we look at things that save us money, that are within our budget. We've, we talked about, you know, tightening our purse strings a little bit and, um, going back to basics and just understanding that these projections, you know, if Wilsonville was to go net zero right now, today without, you know, immediately, these projections would still be exactly the same in 2050 because the rest of the world has to do their part. At this point in time, uh, outside of the United States, you know, if, if the rest of the world outside of China went to net zero, we would still be going down, uh, uh, projections that would, would increase, um, climate change and warming according to these, this data. So, um, it's, it's definitely something honorable to look at, to, to find ways that we can save money, to, um, create resiliency around our buildings and, and our structure and our, and our infrastructure. But we have to be careful that we're, we're being fiscally responsible about it as well. To that point, um, I'm trying to find the, the governor's order, which was... Now we can't find it. Do you remember the governor's executive order number?
Oh, yeah. It's, uh...
It's 2004, I think.
2004.
Yep, right there.
Um, I think I already know the answer to this question, but did the governor throw any money our way to help out with making that happen? Or is that another one of those unfunded mandates?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's certain aspects that probably would fall into that, but certainly some of this is going to be driven by things that are done with greening the grid and, you know, that's a big component of it. And so that's going to occur within, you know, basically the, the system that's already in place and those changes that will take, that'll be reflected in, you know, what utility rates we pay also.
They also did a major update of the building codes.
And the building code was a, a, an important piece of the executive order and things that we're already implementing in terms of changes locally with the building code.
Right. But kind of similar to, you know, how they were looking to create a billion-dollar, you know, infrastructure, um, um, you know, fund, there, nothing like that came along with this, so, um, it, it feels like it's, it's another one of these unfunded mandates. And if we're going to, you know, as we go down this path that we, again, keep in mind the, the budgetary concerns that, because some of this stuff can get pretty expensive pretty quick. There might be some long-term positives for it. I think the report talked about, um, you know, the, the long-term financial benefit of things like solar panels and things like that.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, where we're at right now with looking at, you know, a budget in the next three to five years, it's going to be, it's going to be a tough one to find, you know, extra money when we're trying to take care of basic things and, um, tripling sewer and stormwater rates over the next 10 years. So that's just my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cunningham. Counselor President Berry.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I'm, I'm glad that the governor is setting some standards and that Wilsonville's going to be working towards that. And lots of times we have to think outside the box. It's not always investing in equipment, but it's how we use the equipment. For example, um, on transportation, that during COVID, people started working remotely and so cars, uh, were being used by far less and I'm sure emissions went down during that time. So, I mean, there's lots of, lots of ways to tackle this besides just purchasing different types of cars or, or equipment. We have to use our heads. Thank you.
Thank you.
And on the transportation piece, I mean, we can take little steps. I mean, on the weekends when those people aren't commuting outside the city to work, you know, they can bike ride. They don't go to stores every day. But I appreciate everybody's comments on council. It's just that we need to take some steps, reasonable steps. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm going to adjourn city council meeting until 7:10. That's all right with everybody? That's all right with everybody? I'm going to adjourn city council meeting till 7:10. That's all right with everybody? ... was the most important. I call the order. The meeting of the Wilsonville City Council is September 4th, 2025 at 7:11 PM. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Councilor Chevlin?
Here.
Council President Berry?
Here.
Council Cunningham?
Here.
Council Dunwell?
Here.
Mayor O'Neil?
Here.
Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council President Berry can have a motion to approve the following order of agenda.
I move to approve the following order of the agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Good evening. I hope everyone had a relaxing and enjoyable Labor Day weekend with school now back in session. Summer vacations may be winding down, but our calendars are filling up again, at least in our home, with sports clubs and other school activities. It's an exciting time of year for students and families alike, especially those reaching new milestones like entering high school. I want to take a moment to wish all our students, parents, teachers, and school staff a smooth and successful start to the new school year. And let's all do our part to keep our community safe. Please drive carefully, obey school zone speed limits, and watch out for children as they head to and from school. With that, I'd like to make the following report to council and our community. I want to take a moment to update everyone on one of our city council goals, which is building trust through better communication and engagement. That means engaging the community on urban renewal and infrastructure funding, creating a town-centered communication strategy, and improving online tools so more residents can connect with the city. We're making some progress. It's not as quick as we like, but we're moving forward. As part of this effort, each council member has met with the city's consultant, CFM advocates, to share their thoughts and ideas. I met with them. In that meeting, I once again advocated for a task force to be a part of this global communication strategy, an idea first proposed back in August of 2024 in an opinion piece in the Wilsonville Spokesman. To emphasize the point, I gave them a copy of my article. That said, I'm one vote on council. Each of my colleagues has their own ideas, which need to be heard and respected as part of this global communication strategy. One city staff and the consultant present a full strategy for us to consider. We, as a council, will decide next steps. If a task force is included, and once its parameters are defined, we will establish a fair process for selecting members, and we'll make sure to share this with the community. In the meantime, I understand the city is moving forward with three focus groups on town center and urban renewal, representing pro, a pro group, a con group, and neutral perspectives, or people that don't even know what town center is about. If you're interested in participating in the focus groups, please reach out to our city, the city manager, by email. Let him know your interest and what focus group you wish to be on. In the meantime, I really encourage everyone who has not yet read the extensive Town Center Plan materials to go to the city's website to educate yourself about it. It can be found at www.wilsonville.org.gov/planing-page/town-center-plan, or you can just do a Google search and look for the City of Wilsonville Town Center Plan. It'll pop up probably just as quick. Armed with this information, I believe you will be better informed and engaged in the historic process that occurred and will be better engaged to help us moving forward on the process. With that, I'll turn to some things I did in August, in mid-August, on one of the hottest days of the summer. Representative Sue Ricky Smith and I joined city staff for a whirlwind tour of Wilsonville. We visited Smart's operations, affordable housing under construction at Voila, our constrained wastewater treatment plant, town center, and employment lands both at Coffee Creek and Basalt Creek. It was helpful for her to get to know our community and our needs, and there's no substitute for seeing these projects firsthand. This tour will help us tell Wilsonville's story and strengthen our advocacy in Salem. And I appreciate her taking the time to do this. On August 13, the city held a memorial for the late Senator Aaron Woods at Town Center Park. Speakers included Senator Courtney Neron-Missland, former mayors Tim Napp and Julie Fitzgerald, Clackamas Community College President Tim Cook, and other community leaders. The service was well attended by the full council, staff, legislatures, and community members, with Aaron's family traveling all the way from Colorado to also be there. We dedicated a park bench in his memory, a lasting tribute to his leadership and kindness. Also in August, in fact, that late afternoon after the memorial service, I attended the Oregon Mayors Association Conference in Baker City. This is attended by mayors statewide, and is an opportunity to formulate shared goals and needs so we can have some influence in Salem. Regardless of the size or geography, cities across Oregon share many of the same challenges. We all share challenges in local funding, housing affordability, access to good jobs, healthy communities, protecting local character, and the challenges with unfunded mandates coming from Salem and trying to protect home rule. These conversations remind us that Wilsonville is part of a larger story across the state. On August 19, I attended Portland General Electric's Open House at Clackamas Community College on their grid modernization efforts. Neighbors, particularly from the Stafford Road area, shared concerns about how decisions are being made on power line placement and other infrastructure issues. We are fortunate in Wilsonville that the city requires PGE to place many of our lines in the ground, something neighbors spoke positively about during the event. I attended. Council Dunwell and Council Cunningham also attended. The discussion was a valuable reminder that portions of our grid are outdated, and that while we need to support upgrades, each of us also has a role to play in using energy wisely and efficiently. From my perspective, it's natural to feel frustrated about higher utility bills and over the pace of maybe PGE's changes. But perspective matters compared to some of the serious challenges our neighbors in California are facing with Portland Gas and Electric, which is not our PGE. We are fortunate to have a more stable, reliable system here in Oregon for now, and we need to protect it looking forward in the future. PGE, and this is critical, folks. PG&E also announced plans to form regional community advisory groups. I encourage Wilsonville residents to apply. That's a great opportunity to have our community's voice heard in what PGE does moving forward. Next, I participated in one of our quarterly meetings on the Boone Bridge Seismic Resiliency Project, which is our Wilsonville's top legislative priority. Again, thanks to Senator Courtney Neron-Missland, the legislature approved $1 million for early engineering work. I joined her, Representative Ricky Smith, Congresswoman Selina Staff, ODOT Director Chris Strickler, and others to discuss how best to use these funds and pursue additional resources. ODOT recommended beginning with a geotechnical study and underground look at soil and rock conditions, which was widely supported and necessary to start the process. I continued to believe and stressed in that meeting that we need a broader coalition. The Boone Bridge is not just a Wilsonville's concern. It's a regional west coast and actually a national concern. Transportation companies, major employers, developers, and regional mayors, to highlight just a few, all have a stake in ensuring the bridge is seismically sound and widened to meet future traffic demands. And just for perspective, even if we had all the funding in the bank today, all of it, it will take about seven and a half years to complete the replacement. So, and we don't have the funding. So that's why it's very important that we keep the project front and center as we move forward in the years ahead. Turning to all things Rotary. On August 7, I attended the last Rotary Club of Wilsonville's Summer Concert Series for the year, enjoying the Norman Sylvester Band. It was a great turnout, and the music and vocals were just awesome. And last week, I was also invited to speak at Rotary. I discussed our council goals and priorities and my perspective on how we should move forward as a community. I was grateful for the opportunity to speak, and thank you to Rotary for allowing me to do that. Next, we brought this up during work session. For those who didn't attend the work session, I'll highlight that we're currently in the middle of a legislative special session in Salem. It started Friday, August 29. The legislature convened to discuss transportation funding. The effort led by Governor Kotek seeks to backfill operations and maintenance funding for ODOT as revenue from the gas tax declines because of fuel-efficient vehicles. The proposal raises the gas tax and other fees, including extra fees on fully electric and highly efficient vehicles, and sets in motion a transition to a road user charge where people pay to support our road system based on miles traveled rather than fuel efficiency, leveling the playing field. It also temporarily doubles the 0.1% payroll tax that funds transit to 0.2% until January 1, 2028. SMART would receive additional funds to support new vehicles, service enhancements, and other benefits. Following two public hearings totaling around six hours and thousands of written comments submitted, the Oregon House passed a transportation proposal over Labor Day weekend. The bill is now awaiting action in the Senate, which is delayed until September 17. So stay tuned. And lastly, upcoming meetings. Our next city council meeting will be on Monday, September 15, starting at 7:00 PM. Now, turning to communications. It's my pleasure to welcome the Wilsonville Community Sharing Executive Director, Lee Crosby, to the table up here. And I also see President of the Board, Jerry Bohart, as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our local food bank and social services nonprofit, Wilsonville Community Sharing, is an essential part of our community, has been that way for years. And they help support our neighbors who need temporary help, most especially with food, but also paying probably these extraordinarily high utility bills we're now seeing. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Cricket Jones, and I'm the Finance Operations Supervisor. I was going to introduce Jerry and Lee, but the mayor beat me to it, so that's all good.
Well, you can do it again. I probably didn't do it as well as you would. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Ultimately, I just wanted to let everyone know that we truly appreciate their help and their support as working the front line for city hall in general. We do get a lot of walking people that are just asking for assistance within the city, and where can they get help if they need it? And because we do the utility billing, we often are hearing about people in need first. And so it's a quick reference of, hey, are you aware that they're there? Are you aware that you don't need a referral and that you can go there? And it's just really nice to have them. I don't know if everyone's aware, but we already have a support grant agreement in place that goes through 2028. And this year, we'll be providing them with $63,000 in support to help their efforts. So I'll turn it over to them to tell you more about their program and how they use those funds. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, Jerry Bohart. I've actually been a resident of Wilsonville for 25-plus years, actually involved with the community sharing for 10-plus years, and I think I'm my third year as the board chair. It's a great lead-in. So you should have right in front of you some handouts. So this is a little bit of some of the marketing we've updated relative to giving people information about what we do, what our hours are, and so on. Kind of continuing the thank you. This is actually something that the city put together for us, this little business card. It gets to our Venmo. So we hand it out at all of our events in hopes of getting donations. And it references, there's three events that you all do that the money, anybody who donates goes to community sharing. So your Leaf Day, your Shred Day, as well as your Bulky Waste Day. So if people choose, it's an opportunity for them to contribute. So I do want to say thank you. We could not do what we do without the support of the City of Wilsonville. The current location that we're in has been great as we've been transitioning into our new location. We actually saw, it was about two weeks ago, we did our first site sort of review of it. There's no walls up yet, but we did get to see what the site was going to look like and actually got a draft of the lease just the other day. So things are definitely moving. I think that the hope is that will be in place. Open doors kind of April of next year. So it's happening very quickly. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lee to really talk about what we've been doing. But again, I just want to end on a thank you.
All right. I want to see if I can get this working. All right. Again, I'm Lee Crosby. I'm the Executive Director over at Wilsonville Community Sharing. Close to 30 years. I have to say that out loud, right? Okay. So just for those of you that aren't really aware of what we do, we do, of course, have the food pantry. That we do that on Tuesdays, Tuesdays afternoons and Tuesday evenings. But for the support services that we also provide, which a lot of it is from the grant that we receive from the City of Wilsonville. It helps with rental assistance. It helps with PGE bills, water bills, counseling, occasional car repairs from an additional grant that we've worked on and received for some of the homeless people residing in their cars. We also have access to hearing aids and eyeglasses, courtesy of the Lions Club. Didn't know they did hearing aids, so that's a new one for us. And we also partner with, you know, a lot of the other social service agencies in the community. So we've got seven board members, three staff members. Most of us have been around forever. But the most exciting thing for me is we've just hired a food bank volunteer coordinator. So I'm turning that over to a new young lady, and she's been working out pretty well. She's still kind of in training, but it's going to be a good transition with the hope that when we get into the new building, she's going to have it the way that she wants to run it, not the way that I've done it. So handing off that little torch and free me up for some other activities, I'm sure. So here's just a list of the different resource partners we work with, obviously the City of Wilsonville. All of the apartment managers know us. The Charbonneau Community, they do a food drive every month. All of the other churches donate to us either in food or in money for specific purposes. Again, we get the... Again, we get the holiday programs through Safeway, Girl Scouts just gave us 150 boxes of Girl Scout cookies. I know that sounds a little trivial, but that is a huge treat when you are needing to come to a food pantry and you see Girl Scout cookies there and you can have those. You know, it's kind of a little nostalgic for some of us, but you know, kids deserve a treat, so we always look forward to having them drop those off. And that's a lot of cookies. Again, there's myself, we've got the food bank coordinator, client advocate, who mostly interfaces with some of the applications that we're taking, that for utility assistance, as you all know, it is an application basis. And then we've got close to 50 active volunteers working from anything, picking up our supplies to doing intake, answering phone calls for us, working the food pantry. Okay, this might be a little bit hard to see, but this is a 2024 to 2025 comparison. As you, just, you know, if you look up, let's just pick January of last year, you know, PGE bills for the month, we paid $25,9103. This last January was $3,100. $2,800 in last January for rental assistance, the previous year was only $850. If you look across, you see the numbers increasingly going up, we're projecting to have almost a 57% increase, and we still have some months left in the year. Right now, we are only a couple thousand dollars short of where we were at the end of last year. So your support and the funding that you give us provides us the opportunity to help more families in more ways. It's always interesting to figure out the age, a lot of us, there's a lot of people like, oh, who are you helping, you know, is it just children? Well, we're finding for direct service, it's the 40 to 59-year-olds and the 20 to 30-year-olds, 39-year-olds. We're finding that the 20-somethings do not know how to budget, they do not know how to rent, they do not have, do not know how to read a lease, they, they have no idea what they're getting into when they get into an apartment. And by rights, they only have to look good for 48 hours on a piece of paper to get approved for an apartment. After that, you lose roommates, you lose a job, but you're still in that apartment that you now can't afford. We are seeing an awful lot of that. And then, you know, middle-aged adults, you know, everything's expensive. One job family is not going to make it anymore. Most of our people have two, two jobs and some are doing DoorDash and Uber on the side to make ends meet. Just the trends for the food pantry, because it's always interesting to see, so obviously we're only up to July, because I had to turn this in before August was over. But if you're looking at the numbers, like July, we had 446 individuals, which was 195 families. Almost April is 554, you go all the way back to 2022, that was kind of COVID-ish area. We did maintain our food bank open every single Tuesday all through COVID, even when everybody else was closed. We were working up, but our numbers keep getting bigger, so the, the demand is high. And I don't know if you guys have been to the grocery store, but two bags of groceries isn't, isn't much. So just, we're, the individuals from 2024 to 2025 already is at a 29% increase, and family served is about 34% increase. So, and this is just through July, so. The age group that we're seeing at the, the highest age group, again, that we're seeing at the food pantry is the 25-year-olds and the 44. That's giving you an idea of financially where these young people are. And of course, senior citizens, 65 and older, we, we get a good amount of them also. You can't choose between your medication and your groceries. I'm finding that a lot. So, just in summary, we've had so far a 13% increase for direct service, 17% utilizing families seeking the food bank. They tend to move to more affordable housing, so we're getting them in and out sometimes. We are able to assist families getting into a better apartment, a lower-income apartment, possibly. We'll have to, sometimes we have to provide money for application fees and background checks to help them out a little bit. All right, and just some highlights of this year. We did apply and receive the Community Enhancement Grant in July, so some of you have seen me already this year, probably tired of me, but we got $11,350, and that grant is going to help us move. We have never been in a, in a space where we have owned even one bit of furniture. Everything's been borrowed. We've bought our chairs from Goodwill, nothing matches. We've bought our office desks online, their cubicles that we've managed to put together. So we're looking forward to being able to get new shelving, getting nicer desks, better workspaces, and so that, and that will help us move also. Moving's not fun, this will be my fifth food bank move.
But the last?
But the last, yes. Well, yeah. And actually, I've worked on two different supportive housing service grants with Zoe and Amanda, which has been in the heart of the city, that's been a work in progress, but we've made, we're making some good headway with utilizing some of the funds to help some of the homeless people that we have in our community. And that's that. Oh, wait, no, there's more. 2026 goals, moving, hopefully we're moving April, in sometime in April. That's going to be a great time for all of us, we're really looking forward to that and grateful for the opportunity. Jerry went over a little bit of some of our outreach that we're working on and, you know, website updates, all that is going to come into a nice sweet package once we get moved. Everything's going to be new and shiny. Questions?
I just, if I can, I'd like to make a comment. I really like the cards, especially the fact that it's bilingual.
Yes.
That's critical, that's a big step. I really appreciate that effort. And just so people know, you're moving into the Voila Building over near the Transit Center. And what's neat about that heart of the city is just down the street, right? So there's a area where referrals can come back and forth with you folks.
Much easier.
Yeah. The other, the only other thing is more of a question. How is, how are you operating with the USDA cuts from the federal level? And is there a shortfall there? And how are you guys coping with that?
Well, the community's been very generous. Once again, if, if you're not aware of it, we are a satellite branch of the Oregon Food Bank, so we were able to get our USDA products for free from them. We still can get a lot of free products, it's not real consistent. It varies week to week, we get an order twice a month. We have found that the different organizations that are doing food drives for us, like Charbonneau does one, the last, last Wednesday of every month, we give them a list eight weeks in advance, they gather all of that, and usually bring in close to $2,000 with the cash. We've got another neighborhood agency doing that, Neighbor HOA, that will be doing one, they're going to copycat that and, and start that in October. And we've needed some things, we were out of meat, and that's one of the staples that we get from the Oregon Food Bank. We put out requests and we had quite a few community members show up with Costco bags of, of the one-pound tubs of ground beef. So, we're making do. You know, we get in just enough to get through a Tuesday, that's all we care about, and then we start over the next Tuesday.
And are you going to need helping hands for the move in April, volunteers?
We will need a lot of help.
Okay, well, maybe we should bring that up again towards that time, and I can make an announcement to the community at that time. Thank you.
Even, not even just moving, coming up in and helping us pack.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, both of you, and all the work that you do. That was going to be on my list, if you need help moving, I know I would be happy to pack, move, stack. Of course, your new manager probably will want to, food bank manager will want to, you know, arrange things the way that she wants to see it. The other thing is, I just wanted to share, I recently read, and, and not that you need another project, but I recently read down in the southern part of the state, Jackson and Josephine County, where they just, through grant funding, were able to acquire a van that they take out to remote areas of the county with their laptops and access to satellite internet. And they're working with people that don't have the ability to get into town, they don't have the transportation, maybe there is, they want to apply for a job, but they don't have the ability to communicate, they don't have the online access. It's called the Maslow Project. We all are familiar with the Maslow Hierarchy of Needs that we all learned, I think, in high school psychology, but understanding that, you know, we can't get to the, the top of the pyramid if we can't get our basic needs met. And so perhaps Ms. Guile Hinman or, you know, others that are working with folks, that's just something that maybe a future project guy thought, boy, that would be a great thing for the far outreach areas in Clackamas County to be able to reach out to our community and get them the support and services they need. So, Ms. Guile Hinman, thank you.
Council President Barry.
Let's see. Thank you, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all the work that you do for our community. And I'm really impressed, you said 30 years, that's amazing. So just a general question, so that you can comment and tell people how they can access you. Is it drop-in, do they need to call you, or how does that work?
It's just drop-in on a Tuesday, so we're there from 12:30 to 2:30, or 6:00 to 7:30 at night. So, yeah, we're low barrier at Oregon Food Bank. Stipulated that we have to serve everybody, not just Wilsonville residents any longer, so we, we don't ask for zip codes or, or, well, we do ask for zip codes because I like to track where, where people are coming from. But we, we don't, we can't ask them to prove their address. Food is food, people are hungry, we're here to give them some food, so they don't need to make an appointment. If they come really first thing, like at noon or 12:30, we have them lined up, there's usually about a good 30-minute wait. I always tell people to come like at 1:30.
And for direct services.
Yes, and for direct services, you know, that I'm not going to be working on the food pantry on Tuesdays, I can handle applications at my desk. So usually we will get them through email and then we invite the person in for, to get the paperwork done and get everything figured out that way. We just, you know, we always give the check to the vendor, so if it is a PGE bill or, or a rent or a water bill, it goes directly to the landlord, so. But we make them sign for it, so that they have to sign for the check that they're delivering.
Thank you.
Add a little bit of complexion to the story that you tell, because you've, you've, you've really encapsulated it well, and yet I know that there's a lot that goes on behind the veil. Can you let everyone here and also council know about what happened when you lost power?
Oh. Yes, so apparently PGE was working in this general area on a Friday, and they turned the power off. And when they turned it back on, our freezers all went on at the same time and the breaker. We didn't find that out until Monday, and we lost everything. And when I say everything, it was everything. We had stockpiled a lot of frozen meat and it was awful. But I'll tell you, Matt Baker had somebody over immediately, he actually had it rewired and, and got everything on a different, a different breaker, so it won't happen again.
I, I think the only good thing that came out of that was the timing was impeccable in that we already started conversations, even though it wasn't part of the plan to put a generator in there, we're having conversations as to whether or not that's doable, since this hopefully is a permanent home. And so, so that part of the timing at least worked, so we're keeping our fingers crossed that that will be something that we can afford, or it will be something that I think we could very easily get donations for, because it will be very clear, this is what we're doing with it, so.
Yeah, and I want to point out the resilience that you all had throughout that really difficult moment, because you were opening the next day, and you were, you had a significant shortfall of what were necessary supplies for, you know, individuals in need, and, and how you all lifted yourselves up and rose to the moment and partnered with whoever was available to help you get there was admirable, and I think that part of that speaks to your scrappiness, which is just a part of the nature of what you have to do in a, in a world where, you are living in a world where all those individuals that come to see you are living in, in moments of unpredictability of what's going to happen next. So it is, I, I really thought when you told me about that, that you're really lifting the veil of like, that's what really goes on.
Yeah.
And we, and we rise.
Yes, very true, yes. We, we often laugh that we should have our own reality show called Food Bank, you know, because it would be something.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Next, Carrie Rappold, Natural Resources Manager for the city, will share about the Watching Wilsonville Wildlife Program, which is funded through a Metro Community Enhancement Grant. Hopefully, the presentation includes some exciting trail camera photos like we saw in Party in the Park.
All right, let's see if I can do this right here. Nope. Do you want to help me? One of these days, I'll get this.
No, Zoe, Zoe helps everybody.
It better be soon. I know. Oh, sorry, it's the, right there. That should do it. Eggs. Yep, so we've got to go back. All right, well, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Yes, I'm Carrie Rappold, Natural Resources Manager. And so tonight, yeah, I want to hopefully share some, let's go back to this one, share some photos, some lovely photos that we've been able to capture with these wildlife cameras that are now distributed throughout the city. And I'd like to note that we've had a couple events this year in terms of bringing this information to the public. We had an exhibit at the library for the month of July where we had 12 different photos up from various locations within the community. We also had a presentation that Councillor Berry had attended, I think we had about 20 people at that presentation. And so a woman that I work with, Leslie Bliss Ketchum, I've been working with her now for 15 years on this monitoring, we presented at that meeting. And then we also, just recently at the Party in the Park, we had six photos up, and it was an incredibly popular booth that we had. We had actually a line that formed at one point, because people could spin a little wheel and try to figure out the wildlife photographs that we had. So it's something clearly that the public really appreciates in the community, it's something that I have a deep passion for, it's something that's always meant a lot to me in terms of what we do. And so it's wonderful to get this type of funding through the Community Enhancement Program. So yeah, I just want to give you a little bit of background. So this really started in many ways with the Beckman Road Project. As you know, we have a road that crosses the Coffee Lake Wetlands, but it's a major wildlife corridor. And so when we built that road, we really wanted to be cognizant of the impact that it could potentially have and how to mitigate that. And so we added these wildlife crossing structures. And you've probably seen the fencing that's up along the road, well, there's passages under the road, and that's how the wildlife is funneled to these passages. So one of the things that's really, I think, compelling to note is that, that research we've been doing at Beckman Road over the past 15-plus years is the law- we've been doing at Beckman Road over the past 15-plus years is the longest continuous monitoring project of its type in the world outside of Mamp. So that's really something, I think, that distinguishes Wilsonville in many ways. And so we work very closely with Portland State University through their Road Ecology Program. That's how I got to meet Leslie, and we've had this partnership now over all these years. We took that information and what we learned from Beckman Road, we applied it to Kinsman Road, and, you know, I think even have improved the types of passages that we've used. And then in 2023, the, the impetus was to create a program that would really take the city wide. And I'll show you a map, so we've tried to distribute these locations throughout the city with the cameras. So they really take into account all of these major corridors that we have, and how wildlife can move through our community. And as we earlier discussed in the work session, you know, we created a natural area management plan now, that really is going to be a means that we use to hopefully preserve these corridors going into the future, because those really are the transportation network that wildlife depend on, and how do they get to the various habitats that they're dependent on. So habitat connectivity, that's really what we're trying to preserve here, in terms of trying to put these passages in, where we use them with our projects. But ultimately, how do we preserve these areas, and how do we enhance them, and how do we make them more viable? Because as habitat shrinks, as development occurs, there's less area that wildlife can access. So it's even more important that we have extensive corridors that are still in place that can take them from these various places. So this just gives you an idea, this, this chart here, you know, development's happening all the time, and, you know, it, it has this effect of reducing the amount of habitat and creating barriers that could exist to wildlife. And that's where it's really important, what we've done with the work with Beckman Road, with Kinsman Road. One of the things that we've seen with both of those locations is that they've been extremely effective, and that they don't create a barrier in terms of the road. Another thing that I'm always very proud of, being a part of Wilsonville, is if you drive down those roads, you don't see roadkill on them. You see that the animals are moving through these structures, and they're able to maintain, you know, the viability of what's there. So, as I said, we've, we've done a lot in this community to preserve these natural areas. You think about our Significant Resource Overlay Zone, work that people were doing in the early 80s within our community, and we've carried forward with this great legacy of what this means to our community. So let's get into some of the photos, this is really the fun part of it. As I said, since, you know, 2009, we've been monitoring out at Beckman Road, and we've documented, you know, 24 species of mammals, amphibians, and reptiles. So one of the things that exists along Beckman Road is what we call a reptile or amphibian wall. So basically, they can't climb up over this wall and get onto the road. So we basically have two barriers out there. We have a, a concrete barrier, but we also have the fence that's up above. So this is kind of an interesting picture here. I'm going to let you take a look at it just very briefly, but this is a sand strip that we still monitor under the Beckman Road Bridge. And it's amazing to see what moves through here. And so I'm going to fill this in now, and it gives you an idea of what is moving through there. So you see everything from tree frogs, snakes, salamanders, raccoons. You see a lot of like actual waterfall that just moves through here. And then one of our major species that likes to go under the bridge is deer, and so it's a very viable passage for them to move under there. Kinsman Road, I don't know if you know this, this species, it's that standing in front of the culvert. We have two species of weasels in Wilsonville, a short-tailed weasel and a long-tailed weasel. This is the long-tailed weasel. And so one of the unique aspects of Kinsman Road also, which is unique in terms of research that's been done, is that we were able to monitor the, the, basically before the road was created, we had a construction fence that we put in prior to that actual work with the road. And so we were able to discern what the impact would be ultimately, more so even with when we created the road and the research that followed that. So that was a critical piece that other researchers have actually looked at since we did that. Here's some deer. This is our largest passage that exists for Kinsman or Beckman Road. This passage is tall enough that I can walk through, and I'm six foot five, and so it provides a lot of clearance. Along that left-hand side of the photo is a ledge that is for smaller animals to move across. So you can see rodents and other species, and there's actually a tube also that provides even a greater level of, you know, security and comfort for species that might want to move through there. This actually is the other species of weasel, this is the short-tailed weasel. So our cameras take photos at night, during the day, we also take videos with some of these cameras, we have some very interesting video footage I'm going to show you, I think in the next slide here. So watch this, this is actually a female coyote with her probably less than one-year-old pups, and so there's like a hesitation initially on the part of the pups to go through there. And so basically, these are learned behaviors that they have, where the mother's very comfortable just moving through this smaller passage, and eventually they become very accustomed to it, too. One of the things I've found really interesting is that the cooter, or the coyotes really love these smaller culverts to go through them. You would think they'd want something larger to move through, but this is their primary type of passage that they're using. So back in 2023, we looked at expanding this program, and we wanted to focus, like I said, on these primary corridors that exist within the community. And so we went from just having cameras at Beckman Road and Kinsman Road to distributing them throughout the city. So we put in two cameras that are within the Beckman Creek Corridor. So the Beckman Road dip is where we now currently have the new bridge, and then the other camera is down where the crossing is within the corridor. There's a trail that comes down, and there's a little bridge. And then we also put cameras within Memorial Park and Boones Ferry Park, and then, which was really, what was really an interesting part of this project, is the information that we've been able to share with our local schools. And so we put cameras in at Beckman Creek Primary School and Boones Ferry Primary. And the Boones Ferry Primary camera is right on the boundary between the school site and Graham Oaks Nature Park. And then over on the east side, the Beckman Creek Primary School is on the boundary there between the school and the Mariner Creek Drainage Way. And I'm going to show you some of the things that we've captured with those, with those cameras. This is the Boones Ferry Park site, there's a skunk here, but my, actually, my favorite photo so far from there, can anybody see what those are? Any guesses? Uh, close, it's a, it's a native species, though. They're a beaver. And so there's a, there's an apple tree down in the park, and so they like to go beneath this apple tree and actually eat those apples. So that's what it has in its mouth there, so, yeah, I love that photo. One of the more interesting things in Memorial Park, there's two river otters that are in this video here. So we have, we have river otters not only at Boones Ferry Park, but we have them up at Kinsman Road, they've used the passages up there. They like to inhabit those areas, especially along the river and that interface with these streams that come into it. There's a possum, this is the Beckman Creek Trail, so this is the one that's at the crossing on, on Beckman Creek with the Little Foot Bridge. This is one of my favorite photos, it's the only time I remember capturing the species, it's a gray fox. So this is up above where the new bridge is on Beckman Road. I love that close-up. Sometimes we've had similar close-ups where humans are the ones that are in these photos. I much prefer the deer. So there's a fawn, this is over at that Beckman Creek Primary Site. Like I said, we've shared a lot of images with the schools, and they've used it as part of their curriculum. It's a great learning aspect to see what's, you know, close to these school sites and how connected, you know, students can be to our wildlife. This is the Boones Ferry Primary School Site, another deer, but this is by far my favorite shot. Do people know, yeah, who said bobcat? So, yeah, we have bobcat in Wilsonville. They move in the Beckman Creek Corridor, they're moving through Graham Oaks, they go down to the river. I know a number of property owners along the river that have specifically talked to me about the bobcat that moved through there. And I've seen one within about 25 feet, I was on a site, and that was, that was pretty impressive. So just to finish up here, what are we learning? This is that sand strip that's under the Beckman Road Bridge. It gives us an idea of like the biodiversity certainly, of what we have within the city. And really, there's a lot of wild within Wilsonville. There's a lot that, you know, people can understand, appreciate, and, you know, hopefully do the right things to preserve these habitats as we go forward. And so it gives us this great understanding of also what are their preferences, what are the behaviors that we're seeing in terms of, especially where they're using the passages, but also as they're moving through these other areas. And then ultimately, what's the viability of these species going forward, and what can we do in terms of trying to preserve these habitats, and especially these corridors to the greatest extent possible? And then, as we've talked about earlier with climate change, how are these things, how is climate change going to affect these habitats? How is it going to affect these species as we go forward in time? So that's the presentation, I can take any questions that you might have.
I, I just wanted to, I'm sorry, you can go ahead. I wanted to comment, coyotes are often, I think, misunderstood by community members. I mean, I came from Portland 18 years ago in the Burlingame area, and we saw coyotes all the time. There was a PBS News report this past week about urban coyotes, and how they play an essential role in cities to control, you know, rats and mice and things like that.
Rabbits.
Rabbits, and we have a lot of rabbits. So it's kind of interesting. I had someone run out of Graham Oaks, came up to me and said, can you escort me? There was a coyote that apparently they saw, and I said, sure, and, you know, you know, they run away, so, but they're much needed but much misunderstood, so, anyway, but thank you for this presentation.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, it's cool to see, you know, who knew that we had river otters, you know? The one, so the one that I've spotted around town, being in a lot of baseball games out at Wilsonville, have you seen the osprey nest out there? Yeah. That one's pretty cool, it'd be really cool if we could get a nest camera on that sucker, but, because it was really fun this, this season, at the beginning of baseball season, the babies were just, we could kind of hear them chirping up there just a little bit. And then the very last game of summer ball, they were up there doing their first test flights. So it was fun to kind of watch the, kind of the evolution throughout the, the season as they grew. I'm glad you met, osprey are one of my favorite species, and coyotes, too. I, I love both of those, yeah. Yeah, and it was always fun to see what was going to be on the menu that day, because sometimes it was a fish, sometimes it was a snake or a squirrel, but you just kind of always keep an eye out, oh, there you go. So, yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a really cool nest out there for anybody that would be interested, just go check it out, they're, they're beautiful birds. They are, thanks for mentioning.
So, yeah, thank you for your present, thank you for your presentation, we, we should probably call it Carrie night, you're doing all the presentations.
Probably a little too much.
But I really appreciate it, and I love seeing all the wildlife, too. It was funny that he brought up the, well, your last picture is of the coyote, and then you just mentioned it, and that's what I wanted to ask you about. So I also saw the PBS article about coyotes, and so can you just say out in the public, like, is that something that we need to fear? I think people hear a lot about the coyotes getting small pets, and sometimes they might hear them howling in the background, or what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's always wise, you know, to, especially with like a cat or a smaller animal, that, you know, as much as possible, you probably want to know where they are, and from, you know, especially cats, from a number of reasons, because they're acting as a predator also. And so, but I would say in general that there's really not a lot to be, you know, to fear in terms of like coyote. I mean, I, I've been very close to coyote, I've been within 10, 15 feet, and, you know, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm an adult, but I, I, I think it's very rare, I think there's a lot of stories and a lot of fear that, you know, is, is put out there, that probably isn't as warranted. And coyotes have been certainly one of the most maligned species that you can think of, and things that we did to eradicate them, and the critically important role that they play in terms of maintaining, you know, the, the balance of what exists out in, you know, our natural areas.
Yeah, that's unless they have a box carrying around it that says acne, or they've got rockets strapped to their back, you know, then you might need to worry.
Yeah, if it's the Road Runner.
It is a Road Runner, yeah. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, very much.
Thank you so much. What's that? I, I am going to take off tomorrow. Thank you, you all enjoy your weekend, too.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move to community input and announcements portion of the City Council meeting agenda. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the City Council and any matter concerning city's business, or any matter over which the council has control. It's also time to address items not on the agenda, it's also time to address items that are on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff will make every effort to respond to questions raised during community input as quickly as possible following the council meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes, please, when conveying your remarks, whatever they may be, please speak to the council as a whole and not directly to any one member of council during your comments. Also, please note that you can use the podium or sit at the tables in front of council, whatever makes you feel more comfortable. Please make sure you talk into the microphone at either location. To comment before council in person or virtually, you must sign up either by completing a speaker card at the side of the room, or by using the raise hand feature in Zoom. You'll need to provide your name, address, and topic you will be discussing. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the city council's webpage, As a reminder, when you begin your comments, state your name for the record and state your address, or state that your address is provided on your speaker card. Please note that this is not the only way to communicate with the council or me. You are welcome to submit information writing or via email. Additionally, I encourage you to schedule a meeting with me or any of the other counselors to discuss your concerns further. With that, I call Elizabeth Peters.
Thank you. Mayor and council, I'm Elizabeth Peters, and you all have all of my information, and I thank you for letting me come up. The other day on Facebook, I saw a photo from the Party in the Park. It showed a form on a table for people to volunteer on a focus group for Town Center Plan. I hadn't seen anything on the website, or let's talk Wilsonville, so this really surprised me that something was happening, that I hadn't heard about it, because I, I try to stay informed. Now, tonight, I heard a little bit more about that, so if someone wants to participate in a focus group, they should reach out to Brian, so that was helpful, thank you, and to, of course, read the Town Center Plan in the meantime. But I'm wondering, how are we letting, I have a few questions. How are we letting people know how they can volunteer to sign up for one of these focus groups? What's the time involved in being on a focus group? And what's the purpose of these focus groups? And how is, you know, how is that information, or, you know, what, what's the, what's the purpose for that? So that's it, I just had those questions about that, because I know for each of you, I've spoken with each of you, and I know that community engagement is really important, and we don't want to let anyone not know about another opportunity. And, you know, as I've, as I've gotten more involved, I've noticed a lot of people really care about the future of the city, so we want to make sure we're reaching out to all these different groups that, that don't go to council meetings like I do, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Bagnall.
Thank you, Bill Bagnall, my information is on the card. I first want to commend the city council, I believe your packet was... I believe your packet was, maybe, five hundred something pages long, so you're to be commended. Got through that. One item that stood out to me, and it was discussed in the work session, but that I was pleased to see in the climate action plan, and I should state right off the front, I own a gas-powered car. I ride a bike, took classes here in the community center and around the city, and I walk to the dog park. So I guess I'm multimodal. And I was really pleased to see the, what I would say was modest, but I would agree what was said during the work session, that even a small shift is big for people with cars in the city. But I, I hope that the city will continue to push for that. If we don't reach for hitting that goal of getting people not to give up their cars, but maybe to give up one trip in a car to use a different form of transport. And, and I also, I wanted to just acknowledge that the thing that is changing the, the discussion for so many people are e-bikes. That dynamic of the, the bike itself within the last 18 months has changed, where the pound, average pound weightage has gone from like 50-plus pounds, they're down to 30 pounds. And they're just coming down and down and down. In 2024, e-bikes accounted for $3 billion in sales. It's expected by 2032, that will reach $8 billion. It is changing the way people are moving. It is allowing people with some physical limitations to consider that as a mode of transport. And so I hope the city will continue to invest in modes of transport, much as we saw in the animals that felt safe and got muscle memory to use it because they thought they were safe. Same thing with protected bike lanes. The more you put them in, the more people will use them because they'll feel safe, much like those animals do. And yes, I know, it rains in, in Oregon. I'm aware of that. But people still ride their bikes in the rain. And if we, if we were afraid of that, we wouldn't build parks, because it also rains, and people wouldn't go out there. And I just want to underscore, so it doesn't get twisted in social media, that the plan is calling for approximately 2% of the trips that are currently taken by cars that are less than two miles could shift to walk or cycling, and 10% to transit. I hope we continue to reach for that goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Siz? I hope I got the name, the last name pronounced correctly. If not, okay.
It rhymes with Liz.
Thank you.
Thank you, city council members. My name is Liz Siz, and my address is on the little card. Is that okay? My topic is ICE, the abduction and kidnapping of Mexicans. What is happening on the streets of Ballet, DC, and soon Chicago and Portland is illegal. We all should take this problem seriously and take confidence from the fact that we are on the side of the law and we support the Constitution. Please note, ICE abduction, ICE abducting immigrants is illegal. ICE-following illegal orders or ignorance to the law will not protect ICE participants from prosecution. If ICE members break the law by arresting people without due process, ICE members will eventually be arrested, charged with a crime, tried, and convicted, and might even be sent to jail. Let me just review the laws so we understand that we are on the side of the laws. habeas corpus is due process of law, all people's right to equal process under the law. posse comitatus, you can't go after civilians with troops. e pluribus unum, out of many, we are one. That means as a country, we have a great diversity, and yet we are one people. Martial law is a direct relation to emergencies only. Wilsonville Police Mission Statement protects civilians from unlawful seizure. Immigrants are not illegal. Crossing into the United States without papers is a misdemeanor. ICE indiscriminately is abducted, indiscriminate abduction is a crime. My question, what is your plan if ICE shows up in Wilsonville to illegally abduct citizen immigrants, or immigrants, well, Mexicans? Do you have a committee to address the ICE situation? That is my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Susan Reap.
Do, do I get the answer online?
You can have a conversation with the city attorney, maybe, at a later time, but not this evening.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
But thank you for sharing your comments. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city councillors, and city staff. My name's Susan Reap, and my information's on file. I want to express my appreciation and thanks for many of the recent actions of this city's elected officials and personnel for the thoughtful and meaningful work that you do for us. First, the party in the park was lots of fun, fun for all ages. And I especially want to thank whoever was in charge of food for having food trucks with many vegan options, and the 50 Licks ice cream truck, which always has at least four vegan ice cream choices. Next, I'm still amazed that Wilsonville's wildlife tracking under the Beckman Bridge is the second-longest-running project monitoring wildlife crossing structures, second only to the crossing on the Trans-Canada Highway 1 in Banff National Park. My daughter Jennifer Constantine and I were fortunate to be able to tag along with the experts who monitor the city's wildlife program for Kerry Rappold, while they changed the SD cards and cameras and monitor crossings under Kinsman. There were 823 unique wildlife observations from two months of monitoring. And I imagine that this data and other data collected will be valuable, helping the city make decisions as climate change accelerates. I think it was great that we got to hear more about that tonight. So I say thank you to Wilsonville for being attentive to our wildlife. And climate is my next thank you to the city and commissioners on the relevant committees for all the time spent developing such a complete and proactive climate plan, which I did read and understood maybe some of it, half of it. I think it puts Wilsonville a step ahead for what is an inevitable future, and I thank you for having the courage to tackle this. Sending postcards was a great way to solicit participation in the survey. It might boost participation in surveys even more to put sandwich boards in front of grocery stores or places regularly frequented, saying something like, "Watch your mail for important city survey postcard. We need your opinion." I saw sandwich boards in front of the library in Beaverton in English and Spanish soliciting survey participation there, and they stood out. It looked like a good idea. Anyway, that's all. I appreciate all that you do. When you go through your list of meetings attended and so on, it's clear governing is not an easy job. There's a lot to learn, and it takes a great deal of time to stay in touch with constituents. I wish everyone knew and appreciated that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Rooney?
Hello, my name is Mary Rooney, and my address is on the speaker card. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I want to touch upon a topic that is near and dear to my heart, and that is the community choir through Wilsonville Choral Art Society. Wilsonville Choral Art Society is a nonprofit. It has been the recipient of Wilsonville City Grants, and we've had the honor of performing in this very room. We are always looking for new singers, especially basses, in the adult choir. The next session is starting on September 10 and will run into December. The cost is $60 for the adult choir, plus the cost of a T-shirt. The children's choir is for third, fourth, and fifth graders, and we are offering this upcoming session for free. We are relying on donations and sponsorships to cover the cost, and families will only need to pay for a T-shirt for their child. The choirs are not affiliated with the school district, so any child in third, fourth, or fifth grade from any school or homeschooled is welcome to join. The children's choir will meet at Boone's Ferry Primary School on Wednesdays from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m., starting on September 10. And the adult choir will meet on Wednesdays from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m., starting September 10 as well. The choir director is the award-winning music teacher from Lowry Primary School, Mr. Hill and Payne, and the musical selection ranges anywhere from Shakespeare to Taylor Swift. If anyone would like to register for the choir, donate money to support the choirs, or learn more about the choirs, please visit wilsonvillechoirs.com. I'd like to add that there are countless benefits to singing in a choir for both children and adults. For children, singing in a choir can play an important role in their musical, social, and emotional development. Beyond learning melody, harmony, and rhythm, participating in a choir is an opportunity to practice teamwork and discipline. It can also help build self-confidence. For adults, being a part of a choir also offers a wide range of benefits, including boosting mood, easing anxiety, and building friendships. Overall, it's fun, and it's a great way to meet people here in Wilsonville. So as we like to say at Wilsonville Choral Art Society, sing with us. Thank you.
Do we have anybody online? Okay. I think that's it. Thank you, everybody, for your comments tonight. Now, let's turn to councilor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements. Council President Berry.
Thank you. And I agree, I'm, I'm always really pleased that so many people come to our city council meetings and that they take the time to provide their comments. So thank you for that. And, and the comments are so many different topics. It's really awesome. So let's see. Recently, I've attended a few different events and activities. Last Wednesday, on August 27, I got to attend the Wilsonville Employee Picnic, and that was really fun. It was down at the park. We had a great turnout, really good food, like somebody just mentioned, some good food trucks. And it was just really nice to be able to talk to different employees in a relaxed atmosphere. And the weather was good. It wasn't too hot, and it was sunny. Then the next day, on Thursday, August 28, I attended Rotary's meeting, where the mayor did his presentation about what's happening in the city of Wilsonville. He always does a great presentation. I was really pleased to be there. Let's see. Yesterday, I attended the Tourism Promotion Committee meeting. I have some notes that I'd like to share about that. And then on next Wednesday, the Explorer Wilsonville is hosting with the Chamber of Commerce, the Spark Meeting. It's going to be here at City Hall, starting at 7:45 in the morning. And then before I mention the, what happened at the tourism meeting, I'd like to just point out that we have another new issue of the Wilsonville Boone's Ferry Messenger. I haven't had a chance to go through all the articles, but I know I will, because there's always really good information. And I noted on page seven that for people that are interested in what's happening to the vacant businesses and properties here in Wilsonville, there's a really good article that goes through lots of the different properties, including Fry's, Regal Cinemas, Albertsons, the recent closure of Rite Aid, and that it, there's that spark of hope that Wilsonville is a really desirable location for businesses. We are, you know, halfway between Portland and Salem. We're close to Hillsboro. We're at the beginning of the Willamette Valley area corridor. And, you know, it's a great city. So I think we're really attractive for different businesses. We have different financial incentives, including the tax increment finance, and then also the tax rebate, the WIN program. But I encourage you all to take a few minutes and read the article, page seven. So then, just to highlight what happened with the Tourism Promotion Committee meeting yesterday, the first thing we did was reelect our chair, is Brandon Robyn. And then we elected a new vice chair, Libby Crawford. So I'm really excited with the new leadership. The marketing consultant did the presentation. Some of the highlights of that is that they visited Wilsonville for becoming even more familiar tour in Wilsonville. They focused in on visiting new location and events than what they had previously visited. They talked about the social aid ad that has reached 22,000 people and over 2,400 engagements. It was for a relatively low cost of $120. The ad ran for one month, and it includes five trips that you could do for springtime. They talked about the soft launch of the Invite/Explore/Repeat campaign. It's focused in on our local residents here in Wilsonville inviting friends and relatives to come visit and learn more about what we have to offer. There is a business toolkit that's available for any local business that would like to participate, and the full campaign is going to be launched next spring. A new e-newsletter is going to go live in early October, so we're really excited about that. And let's see. Then we had the Tourism Development Strategy Implementation Committee, their consultant talk about what they're working on. They're implementing, you know, five key strategies. One is to evaluate needs and funds for bicycle amenities, and somebody also mentioned e-bikes might be a good topic for that. Another strategy is development destination ambassadorship. There's a toolkit for orienting businesses. Another strategy is to increase connections with partner destination marketing organization, DMOs, at the regional and state level. Another strategy is to increase the Explorer Wilsonville website visibility. If you haven't already taken a look at it, please go to wwwexplor Wilsonville. It has lots of information about different activities, different blogs that are written about Wilsonville, and different events, places to stay, places to eat, that's in Wilsonville and also nearby. And then also the strategy to develop partnerships to identify and foster the development of Wilsonville-specific signature event. Other updates that I've already mentioned is that next week, on Wednesday, September 10, the chamber is going to have the Morning Spark Meeting, and we're going to highlight the Explorer, the Invite/Explore/Repeat program that we're working on with the Tourism Committee. And then finally, there's an assessable tourism ambassador training program that's coming up. It's held in Wilsonville. It's on October 3. There is registration required, and space is limited, but we're really excited. It's a free training, and if you need more information, please contact us. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilor Dunwell?
I have no comments, other than the fact that I just want to, if you weren't here for the work session, I did mention the continued importance of fiscal responsibility. Unlike our mayor, I do not believe DEI is our North Star. I believe fiscal responsibility and quality of life are. I will stand and support DEI as long as I am on this council, but I do not believe it's our North Star. We have to continue to focus on both our quality of life and our fiscal responsibility. And I believe that tonight was a prime example of why both of those are important. So thank you.
Councilor Cunningham?
All right. So pretty busy August. On August 5, I was late to National Night Out in Villebois, because I was invited by one of our local Rotarians, Kyle Bunch, to see a speaker at our library give a presentation about human trafficking. She's a Rotarian. She's a Rotarian from Virginia. She was actually out here on vacation. Her name's Amelia Stansel, and she was out here on vacation, took some time out of her vacation to come and speak to our local Rotary chapter and some of the other ones in our region, as well as, it was nice to see that there was Kelly Sloop from the School Board, as well as Megan Vidal were both at the presentation as well. And I think it was well received, and an important thing that we do need to be aware, as much as we'd like to believe it doesn't exist in our community and around our community, it is the dirty little secret of our society that human trafficking is alive and well in our country and our, in our communities. So I'll keep banging the drum on that because you shine lights on cockroaches, and cockroaches run away. Then the next, later that week, August 6 and 8, I was able to be a part of the interviews for the Peer Support Specialists that council approved funds from our opiate settlement money. Unfortunately, we had a couple of good candidates, but the person that was selected did decline, and so next week, there's going to be more interviews. But that process continues, and we'll continue to find the perfect person for Wilsonville to come and fill a really important role in our community. On August 18, I met with community members again to discuss Boone's Ferry Days, reviving that, and so, Councillor President Barry, if you're looking for that signature event for tourism, it's right up your alley, so I'm going to be, I'm going to be sending them your way. But yeah, we continue to work with people, a variety of people from across the community, different backgrounds, living in different neighborhoods all across Wilsonville. It's been really fun to see some of the excitement that's been building around it with people that have lived here for a long time, that fondly remember that event, and we're looking forward to continuing that work and bringing that, bringing that sucker back. So then August 19, as the mayor mentioned, myself and councillor Dunwell and the mayor attended the PG Open House. It was good to hear about some of the projects and some of, some of the things that are going on around us to build that infrastructure that we need so we can turn on the lights. August 21, Party in the Park, great time, and then that was kind of it till, till tonight. Give you guys a heads up, though, on September 5, which is tomorrow, is the Wilsonville Wildcats High School Varsity Football, first home game versus Sandy. So go out there, cheer them on. I'll be there flipping burgers on the second shift after I run a baseball practice right before that. So besides that, and I don't know, were you going to give an update on the city manager, the city manager stuff? Am I going to steal your thunder if I talk about the email we got? So, all right, I'll let, I'll let Brian take that, and I won't steal his thunder.
Councillor Shavelin?
Thank you, Mayor. Also a busy August. I'll just share a few things that I did, and then I'll share some announcements. On August 10, councillor President Barry and I were able to attend the event at the Coffee Creek Correctional Facility Through a Child's Eyes, and this is the opportunity for people in, I'm trying to use the right term, adults in custody, thank you, adults in custody, that have children. They don't get to see their children as often as I'm sure they would like. So this is a special carnival that, that is held every year and sponsored by the Rotary, and it's very touching. The hardest part was seeing the mamas saying goodbye to their children. Could be many, many months before they see them again, so I'm so glad to have had the opportunity to do that. I also attended, along with many of our council members, the memorial for the late Senator Aaron Woods, and that was a very touching ceremony, and it was very heartfelt to see their family members, his family members that traveled from Colorado. The, I also attended the summer picnic for the city employees, and that was fun to see them be recognized, particularly for those that have particularly long employment longevity. I also continue to meet with constituents for coffee, and I encourage anyone that would like to meet me for coffee to just reach out on my city email, and I'm happy to schedule that. A number of us have mentioned the party in the park. It was a lot of fun. The duck race is just loads of fun to watch the kids use the water feature and see whose ducks are going to win the race. And then the train ride was also a very popular activity. Thank you to the city staff for putting together such a wonderful event. I will take this opportunity to mention the DEI calendar, that is some important events this, coming up this next month. Three events of note in September, Hispanic Heritage Month runs from September 15 through October 15, where people of Hispanic and Latino culture have the opportunity to celebrate their ancestry, and this includes people from Spain, Portugal, Mexican, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. Also, Rosh Hashanah is September 22 and 24. This is considered the Jewish New Year for our citizens that celebrate their Jewish faith, and for those of us that are friends of people that celebrate their Jewish faith. This is the first of the Jewish High Holidays. And lastly, Yom Kippur is another Jewish High Holiday that is celebrated on October 1 and 2. This is the holiest day of the year in Judaism. It involves a 25, 25-hour period of fasting, prayer, and a focus on one's spirituality. Also coming up is the Emergency Preparedness Fair. This is on Saturday, September 20, from 10 a.m. to noon in the Stein Bouger Barn in Memorial Park. This is a very, I think this is the second annual one, if I'm correct? Okay, well anyhow, please go. Okay. Okay. Well, please go, because making sure that we're prepared, whether it's during power outages, ice storms, wind storms, heaven forbid wildfires, you can learn about how to put together your to-go, your go kit, rather, so that's something that's stored for when there's an emergency. You grab your kit and make sure that you're safe and, and find a safe place to, to go if you can't stay in your home. The Wilsonville Ready Campaign is a year-round effort to help residents and businesses become better equipped to endure the immediate aftermath of an emergency. And in my community, I attended last week an emergency preparedness fair for healthcare providers to know what to do and how to rescue people and provide a triage should someone be injured. And then just today before city council, I also attended, in my community, a communication event on how to communicate with one another during an emergency, including the use of walkie-talkies. Lastly, Paper Shredding Day is coming up. This is the city's annual shred day on Saturday, October 4, from 9 to 2 in City Hall. Very important if you've got personal or private information that you want to shred. There is no charge for this. You do need to prove that you are a resident, so have your driver's license or some other piece of mail that proves who you are and where you live. In lieu of a fee, the city does ask that you consider making a donation to Wilsonville Community Sharing. Please come early in the day, because once the truck is full, it's full. So come early if you've got some big shredding to do. And that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item is our consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the items on consent?
Resolution number 3212, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville supporting an application with the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development, DLCD, for a 2025 through 2027 housing planning assistance grant for the Housing Strategy Compliance, Statutory Compliance Project in minutes of the August 4, 2025 city council meeting.
Thank you. Councillor President Barry can have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made, and second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. Is there any, there's no new business, no continuing business, or a public hearing, so city manager report?
Yeah, so tonight at 5 p.m. was the closing for the requests for proposals for search firms, and so you will be receiving in your inbox soon a criteria ranking form along with those proposals, and if it appears that there is consensus that you all like the same firm, you don't have to do any interviews, but if there's like some disagreement, or you want to interview one or two or three of those, I think we had two in at 3 o'clock today, so I'm sure we'll have at least five or six. So you'll get those, then we'll come back and ask you what direction you would like to go in, and then you'll provide that direction and start as soon as, as you'd like, actually.
And for the purposes of everybody, this is for the city manager.
Yeah, it's for, yeah, this position right here.
You're welcome to change your mind.
I'm good, actually.
Why do I hope AI creates some copy?
I appreciate that. And I also wanted to let you know that I'll be celebrating my 62nd year orbiting the sun at our next council meeting. I'll be with my son in central Oregon, so the capable Ms. Trowha will be sitting in this chair for that council meeting.
Great.
Congratulations, happy birthday.
Thanks.
You're catching up with me.
Close. That's all I have, Mayor, thanks.
Is there any legal business?
I guess I could address that form, if you'd like me to.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
It's a very innocent explanation. We were thinking like, what could we do at the city council table to engage on the task or the urban renewal town center? So I had the bright idea like a day before to say, why don't we just have a form, have three boxes, those that want more information, those that are opposed, or those that want to see it move forward. So that was on me. Didn't really have time to communicate that to the community. We were just trying to capture that audience that was there, and if they wanted to submit their names. We haven't actually engaged on the, on the focus group stuff yet, because I haven't had that meeting with, I think it's Davis Hibbits that we'll, we'll engage with. So I'm just trying to gather as many names as possible. So anybody that's interested and wants to, to do that, submit your names, I don't even know how many people are going to be on it. We haven't discussed logistics, process, or any of that yet. It's very early on in, in that. But they did say that we would probably do those in mid-October, so that's what I've communicated on that subject.
Thank you. Thank you. Any legal business?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to note that on the RV and abandoned vehicle portion of the code enforcement update, the council goal on public safety, the community questionnaire is live on Let's Talk Wilsonville, so if you go to Let's Talk Wilsonville and go, it's on one of the, it's one of the featured projects. And it's also, there's going to be a blurb in the Boone's Ferry Messenger coming out on that survey as well, so please take it. We've, it's been out less than a week. We already have over 40 responses, I've been told, so yeah, we're already, we're getting some really good feedback. That will be live and through October 5, I believe, so please go and engage there. And then the other thing that I just wanted to note, on, on opioid settlements, we have signed on to two additional settlements of, for opioid funds. The first is the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy and Sackler Family Direct Settlement. Oregon's going to receive about $66 million, so as a subdivision under Oregon, we will get some of those funds. And then they're calling it the Secondary Manufacturers Group. There's eight manufacturers that are also contributing about $10 million to Oregon as part of that opioid settlement. So additional funds that will be coming to us over different year periods, depending on the settlement, but wanted to let council know, since we are using those opioid funds to fund the peer support specialist.
Thank you. Okay, with that, the city council meeting is adjourned at 8:43 p.m. The city council will now meet in executive session pursuant to Oregon Revised Statute, Section 192, 660, subsection 2, paragraph H. Legal counsel litigation to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of the city with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Members of the public outside of representatives of the news media, please exit council chambers, and we will be breaking for five minutes.